Is it Boeinghausen? Apple Boeinghausen.
Yeah. No. John Apple.
Is it just John Apple?
Yeah.
Emily and this guy.
Casey's.
Casey's Boeinghausen. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you happy to be here?
No.
You don't do that.
I have, used to do this, but I left it up to Emily for the last two years.
Okay, so you might, you might need to shot a wall part.
Yeah, I, I, I got a picture, I looked through about a little bit.
It's what it is. Happens.
Unfortunately, I was gonna like.
Yeah, it's actually the rating.
Courtney has weight.
Almost a hundred percent. No, but we've already got one.
She said she might get back here.
And shoot, so we already have one.
So we gotta talk a lot.
So you're gonna have another one.
August, August first.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Nope, phone rings, yeah.
We're fine.
Some of the business is obviously mixed up. Emily's on the vacation.
So I'm good.
Anyway.
Oh.
There's anything really?
Pretty shattering here.
Yeah. Couldn't get my daughter to go to Kemper Care today, so she's sitting at my work. Mom, I'm not going to the supervisor meeting. I'm like, fuck you're not. It'll be four in four minutes.
I would, but.
I guess I would have a lot of motivation if they had a why.
Well, I, my weekend was kind of everything that didn't turn around.
When they can open your church back up.
It's open.
Oh, it is? I thought you said they closed it, moved.
Okay, kinda back up, we're planning for a day.
There's a lot of.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, first thing we have is the approval of the agendas. I don't think there's any additions or corrections.
There's no additions or corrections on my commotions, but could the agenda?
No, second.
Then move the second through the agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signified, say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next is the approval of the minutes from last week.
You have two.
I was gonna say there's Monday and Tuesday.
Monday.
Monday and Tuesday, and we'll do them all one motion. Tuesday ones are short. Very good minutes, but they all look very well done. I think the motion has been approved. Looks set to minutes for July 12th and July 13th. A second. The move in second to approve the minutes of July 12th and 13th. Any further discussion? Not all of the favor, signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, first thing we do has on the agenda here is what the CDVG Down Payment Assistance Program. Hello, uh, should I just go down this list here?
Yes.
Okay, the first thing we have is the resolution of 2021-019 application and number of projects for the 2021 CDVG Home Buyer Assistance Program. Do you want to?
This is the resolution that says that you will be applying for the five programs, which is the maximum that we can do as we discussed last time, although we perceive that we'll help similar numbers of people on your next program.
Do you have somebody in the waiting cabinet, sorry?
I'm getting calls, yes.
Getting calls.
Yeah, so like you just need to wait till October if you want to use this, because that's when I perceive that funds would be available.
Call it just to refresh our memory, like we had nine homes last round.
Ten.
Ten?
Yes, we did do ten.
Okay.
So the last one will close on August 6th.
Okay.
Are you?
Yes.
The missus first named out, just a lot of.
Correct.
See, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Then move in second to approve resolution 2021-019. Roll call. Roll call.
Just read off the names.
Miners.
Yes.
Ruggles.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shattler.
Yes. Okay.
All I.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution adopted. Next we have is approve Regent Paul as a technical service provider. So this needs just a motion to approve them as one.
And that is contingent upon the grant award. This goes back to the RFP that Courtney sent out earlier as part of it. The technical services provider does all of the inspections and lint-based paint work for each project.
So.
Second.
Then move in second, any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next is approve Regent Paul as administrative service provider.
So.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Next is approve the administrative plan. So. Second. Then move in second to approve administrative assist, approve the administrative plan. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Next is the authorization signature on form 2880. And that signature will be?
Chair. Right.
So.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the authorized signature on form 2880. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Next is the authorization signature on the federal assurance form.
And also, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the chair to sign the federal assurance form.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Next is the authorization signature on environmental review.
I have an objection. I noticed when I was reprinting everything that I think the first two pages, there was some directions. So the first two pages might have seemed a little confusing. Then I think that may be Rich's name. So I reprinted those two pages that actually made the signature form to, to help clarify that. Because it was actually like page four and five.
Now we can share.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion to authorize the current chair to sign the environmental review.
I'll second that motion.
Then move in second, any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, remember those forms are hard.
Uh, they can be emailed to me. I'll send Courtney an email, because I want to make sure she puts contingent upon grant award for those three motions.
Alright. Thanks for coming in, Carla. I hope that this program gets some more homeownerships.
I'd like to see ten more this year, really good. Alright, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
We must be dead so fast, or we'll get that split.
I'm just gonna go ahead and maybe assign these here. Then, uh, you see the other one.
Do you have somebody coming in for veterans here?
Yeah, I'm sure they'll come.
Zach didn't hear him.
Well, he could probably go down to number six.
Okay, we'll go down to number six. Interfund transfers.
Interfund transfers.
And there's two of those, I think. One's from Mount Carmel, one's from Maple River.
And these are to transfer times to the sewer projects.
Right. Right. And those, I think, are both resolutions.
Yeah, it's an annual event.
Yeah, and I think, so we will do the first one, which is for Maple River.
I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution for inter, interfund transfer for the Maple River Water Fund, probably eighteen, excuse me, eight one zero zero, to the local option fund.
Okay. Is there rather full section number or name?
There is not.
I don't think there is, obviously.
Not.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second to approve the interfund transfer from Maple River Waste Water Fund from Fund 8100 to Fund Local Option Fund 0019. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Miners.
Yes.
Ruggles.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shattler.
Yes. Okay, next we will do the transfer resolution for Mount Carmel Waste Water Fund from Fund 8000 to the Local Option Fund 0019.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of dollars from Mount Carmel Waste Water Fund 8000 to the Local Option Fund 0019.
I'll second. It's been moved in second, any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Miners.
Yes.
Ruggles.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shattler.
Yes. Okay.
That's from the first item on the agenda. One of them. One of the many.
Josh gave you that for insurance.
Okay, let's go down to number seven. Uh, acknowledged receipt of the fiscal twenty county audit. Uh, this, this motion had been received, so that we recorded in minutes. Uh, I think you all have gotten a copy of the audit, and there's just basically the same findings what has been in the past. Lot of due segregation of duties, and there's also some issues with some time, uh, employee time records. So, this is, like I said, this is just a motion to accept it, and not anything modifying it. Other than that, the audit is pretty good. Kind of same issue we had in the past.
I'll make the motion that with knowledge received of the fiscal year twenty county audit.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
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 I mean, I think there's some of that, one of those issues that probably need to do some, some sort of a program for, whether it's suggested or about the time or whatever. Yeah, we have to make a policy for that.
Correct action type thing? We've, we've chased that a couple of times.
It just does, it's something that's leading us. Okay. Um, I assume there's some additional medical examiners?
No, no, I'll talk to that.
Oh, okay, we'll do that then now.
Or Stephanie either one of us. Um, so Carroll County was down to three, well, four medical examiners. One of them's gonna be retiring, I think in September. They're tough to come by, tough to retain, so Dr. Slattery did approve nine new medical examiner one. And the board needs to approve them, and then those minutes will need to be sent to the state to get full approval. And the current pay, last year there was forty calls, and the current pay is a hundred and fifty dollars per call. And sometimes those calls are four to six hours. They have to stay with the body and with the family until the body's picked up by the funeral director. So it's recommended that the pay go from a hundred and fifty per call, which would be a two thousand dollar increase in their budget on the average of last year's forty calls. Um, and then yearly from when, every year they get an increase, when the county employees get an increase. So we don't have to do these lump sum adjustments per call.
So you're saying go from a hundred?
Hundred and fifty to two hundred per call. So last year, the county spent six thousand dollars to the medical examiners for the hundred, or for the forty calls they had. So if they, and you can't predict how many calls they're gonna have. And then, uh, and that would be, well, addition, part of it is to keep retention of the medical examiners. And that's why the push was on, and they're thrilled they have nine new ones. Slattery met with them, I was there also Thursday explaining how he needs the reports to be filled out, how to work the website, they've all attended the training. So these new ones will be approved by the state after they receive their four minutes.
To back that up a little bit, I will say out of the newly, was it nine?
Yeah, nine.
They are spread out through the county really nicely. We've got what there's Frida Manning, so that, that will help Dr. Slattery as well.
Yeah, because when the comm center goes down them right now, they have the list of four. If none of those four are available or in the county, then Dr. Slattery has to go himself in the middle tonight. His pay is only seventy-five dollars and no increases. Ask for him, that he asks and strongly recommends to keep the retention of these people, we up to two hundred dollars for their services.
What did you say about? If, who can do the exam, then who doesn't?
Slattery does.
If none of these?
No, okay, okay, so right now they're down to four.
Right.
And they're getting ready to add these nine more.
Right.
Which will increase the pool that the comm center can call. And they are regional, like Stephanie said.
So we're gonna go to thirteen, but one is going to retire.
He's gonna retire, yes.
Back to twelve.
And he spoke at the meeting on Thursday because he, Josh Smouse is his name, and, uh, he's been doing it for thirteen or fourteen years and has it down pretty good. But he went into detail how a lot of it is not pronounced in the body dead, to stay in with the family. And if you have a family member who lives in Lincoln, Nebraska, and they say they don't want the body served until they can come view it, medical examiner has to stay onsite with that body until the funeral director comes and gets it. If they can find a funeral home that's available, and most of these are in the middle of the night. And you can see a lot of these are paramedics, we've got a deputy sheriff is also there. But if the ambulance is called to a code blue, the person who's on the squad cannot be the medical examiner.
Okay.
Because there could be a conflict of interest. If they did chest compressions or whatever, they need to be removed, then they still have to call the comm, comm center to send one of these.
Other than themselves, even if they are.
Yeah, and two of these could be on the same call, so that narrows the pool.
Yeah, that could happen.
And Josh Williams is the backup for when Slattery's gone, but, yeah, he, his phone does ring a lot more. I mean, he's thrilled to have these nine new added, so it'll take him off the hook. And he strongly recommends the, the price increases.
And these guys have all went through that training.
They all went through it, and Slattery's approved them, and then now, once they receive our minutes, next Monday, when the minutes come out, they go to the state, then they will be officially licensed.
This training has been St. Louis, is that right?
No, I think it's St. Louis, it's online, yeah.
It used to be, they had to go put down.
St. Louis to do it, used to be.
So that's good.
So then we have to, uh, appoint, we, the appointments have to be approved by this board.
The board today has to approve these.
We're gonna do two things here.
Yes, we're gonna do that, and then we're gonna ask for the pay increase from the current hundred and fifty to the two hundred dollars.
So if none of these can go on a call, that's, that point then when Slattery?
Slattery would be on the call, yes.
Well, he has to prove it anyway, I think the documentation goes.
It's his final signature, his, I guess, if these people don't fill out the form correctly, and he has to go in and amend it or ask the proper questions, his job becomes very difficult then. And he spoke to that Thursday morning at the meeting with these people. And that's why, uh, I would say the subject matter expert for Carroll County is Josh Smouse, who is gonna be leaving soon.
But I mean, doesn't, if they got a complicated one, he probably gets called in right away, doesn't he?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
No. But these, the medical examiners have to determine, okay, it's automatic autopsy if the person's under eighteen. There's, I mean, they have to make all these determinations. They've got a list, a state form they have to go down to make all these determinations.
So did anybody ask, you know, like, say you're adding nine?
Yep.
So, you know, is there, you know, that first time that one of these goes out, that's a pretty big burden on them.
Okay, so.
So is this somebody else?
They have a group chat between them, where whoever the experienced one is, then a second one can attend, or a third one, they don't want more than three to scene, because usually family members are there.
Sure. So are we paying each of those two hundred dollars, or are we paying one two hundred?
I think it would just be the one, the, the people learning would not.
That's in train, they're in training.
I would say so, yes.
Yeah.
Like I said, last year, uh, if you read the email, there was forty of them. And the medical examiner's budget, which is mainly autopsies and transports, last year we paid forty-one thousand. So to just the medical examiners themselves, last year was four thousand. If we had the same year, it would be six thousand. This year with the increase, it would be a two thousand dollar increase.
And I assume we were up just a slight tick last year.
Courtney said it varies between thirty-five and fifty. Again, it depends on circumstances. A suicide is one where a medical examiner would have to go, they went through, if it's, uh, geriatric care, those, the medical examiner may not be called for that. And there's obviously been more than forty people who have died.
Right.
And if they are trying to resuscitate them, they go to the emergency room, they don't need to call the medical examiner, the hospital takes care of it.
Yeah, just curious, like, say if there's a, there's a challenging situation, does Dr. Slattery go out?
His phone number, he, I was amazed, his, he keeps his phone on answering calls day and night, it doesn't matter.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
No, he doesn't, he covered that.
I mean, I, that, yeah.
He went through the what ifs, if, if there's a question about that, or if there is.
It's a lot more challenging than what I anticipated, unbeknownst to myself, because obviously I'm not an ME, and there's things that I did not know, but they did a really good job in explaining exactly what all goes into it. And it's not for everybody, I think that's why you'll see, you're either, you have some kind of background in that environment, because I wouldn't be able to do it anyhow.
But they're responsible for tagging the body, um, there's, yeah, all kinds of things, and again, it's a detailed fore. And so the good news is, we have nine more, because when Daryl had told me that they were recruiting, he was worried because the pool was so small. Jason and the comm center said, they do have trouble finding one, so now they are gonna be more regional, like Stephanie said. Scattered down all four corners of the county.
And probably, yeah, finally, that delays the process.
Right.
And sometimes that can make it harder for them.
I didn't realize how much counseling I had to do with the family members who were on the scene. So, yeah, I would recommend that we approve the nine, and if you want to read them, Gene, and then make a motion.
So do we have to, do we have to reapprove the other ones?
No, just the new ones, just the nine new ones.
Uh, okay, the nine proved, the newly trained ones that were gonna be approving today is Tom Franson, deputy, Ashley, Ashley Reisinger, paramedic, Marissa Rothmeyer, paramedic, Jamie Whitker, uh, paramedic RN, Scott Stork, paramedic, Rick Hamilton, EMD, Julie Nelson, EMD, Ken Bill, paramedic, Kenny Hanson, paramedic. The move in second to approve the, the addition of both new training people to the EMDs. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. And Josh is retired in a year, he's not retiring right now.
You know what, he's, they're trying to keep him on as long as they can, but through at least September was his last. Within the next year, he's gonna retire.
How old did, we won't do anything with his retirement at this point.
Right, no, no.
So the next subject in that is to, it's been suggested that we raise the EMA's pay from a hundred and fifty per call to two hundred per call.
And yearly after percentage increases what the county gets, county employees get.
That's a good idea.
To follow. Yeah, so we don't have to keep doing lump sums every five or ten years.
So, uh.
So Courtney said a motion to say.
Let's clarify that county employees thing. Because that can be different, different places. I would suggest that we follow the union or the ambulance personnel. Because we have secondary rules.
Oh, being thirty.
Seven union, we've got all the county employees. And I, and the reason I'm picking the ambulance is because that is part of that profession.
I.
And I mean, does that make sense?
Perfect.
Because we're, we're gonna have also, they're gonna say, okay, uh, your life official's got this, he's got this.
Whatever the union decides for the, the kind of analysis.
Just say whatever the ambulance staff gets.
Yeah, whatever is determined.
Because I don't wanna put high union in there in case, like, they, if they would be certified, you know? Are you, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
I'm trying to make this so.
So.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, I'm gonna back yours up, so I'm gonna clean that out real quick. That we go ahead and raise from one fifty to two hundred in this next fiscal year, and then going forward, they will receive the same raise as the ambulance department for percentage.
Not next fiscal year, I mean current fiscal year.
This current fiscal year.
I don't know if you need to put percentage on it, but just, just, just what, just what the increase is for them.
Where they get annual raises.
Whatever the annual raises.
It's been moved in second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all of the favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, uh, let's go to third quarters. Quarterly report.
Good morning.
We're kinda jumping all over, but we kinda got ourselves way ahead still.
Um, quarterly report, quarter four of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year. And then it's not on the agenda, but I did have the fiscal year report also. Did you guys get that, or did I?
No.
Yep.
I got that. Last question, we didn't do them, I figured.
Oh, yeah, so this is, the quarterly is just comparing like we do every quarter, and then the year, one year to the next. So as far as the quarterly, everything's steady, I mean, it's high, it, it's high, but it has been, that's just nor, been the trend in the previous year, higher than the previous year.
About ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's just, it's just busier, yeah, but you can see there's more mortgages being filed, more releases, you know, that's probably just with the low interest. More refinancing type things. And then, um, our vitals is just up, that's just with the store on the driver's license, so.
What was that with that?
Yeah, yeah, that's this, people needing to get their birth certificate, a marriage license for the store on their driver's license, so that's way up. It's weighed up, and they decreased the fee by five dollars, so it's, it's definitely been busy. So, and then it's, our hunting and fishing is way up too, this quarter, this quarter compared to the previous quarter or previous year. And I don't know, is COVID, are people still getting, staying home with their fishing license? Is that why that's so, so busy?
We noticed that last year, that, uh, people went into hunting and fishing.
Yeah.
And I think they're probably just gonna renew it.
Let's renew it.
They picked up a new pastime.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah, so, just, just, it's been busy, it's been very busy, which is good, because it was, it felt slow for a while there during COVID, so it's picking up, so.
Okay. Any questions on the quarterly? Any questions on the quarterly report? You have to accept the quarterly report?
Second.
The move in second to accept the quarterly report? Do you want to go through the yearly one now?
You, you want to, okay. You're going to do both of them at the same time or?
That's all we do, second.
Okay. You going to vote on that one? You going to vote on that one?
Yeah. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favors signified, let's say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion period. Do you want to do the yearly one?
Yep. On the fiscal year, you're just seeing the same trends. Honestly, that I've been talking about, you know, the mortgages are a little higher and the releases with the refinancing from one year to the next. It's just, it's just been busy with recordings, which is good to see. I feel though, in the next year or two, you're going to see that slow down a little bit because interest rates are going to come back up and it's not going to be to an advantage to refinance, so. Yep, that could be.
And, and like your snowmobiles and boats and all that, that's cyclical, isn't it? Isn't that a three-year deal?
That's every third year, yeah, they would do every third year.
Don't think.
But as far as the taxes and that, that's only when they first buy it.
And I think that's, there's a lot of money out there right now, but it's kind of a bit of cooped up.
Yeah, so, kind of just the same trends as on the quarterly.
Any questions on the annual?
If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the yearly report.
My second, just the move in second to approve the annual quarters report. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favors signified, let's say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion period. Thank you, Ashley. Matt, you ready?
Sure.
Or what, you want to go first?
You go.
Which one's going to be about five minutes?
Not me.
Not you?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I can play the five minutes.
No, you don't have to do it quite a minute. They're, they're scheduled nine thirty. You take whatever you need.
I think they're, they're on the hall, they're on the hall.
Go ahead.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Matt.
Have a whole lot today. I do have one utility permit. This is for Western Iowa Power. Um, it is basically putting a service line across two hundred and seventieth street. This is north of Manning. Uh, for, I believe it's a new shop building that, that gentleman's putting up. Don't really see any issues with that. Be section twenty-seven, across section twenty-seven, thirty-four of the Washington Township. Um, across two seventieth street. They're going to bore, bore it in like normal. Don't really see any issues with that one. Any questions regarding that one?
I'll make a motion to approve the utility permit presented.
I'll second.
Just the move in second to approve the utility permit? Any further discussion? If not, all of the favors signified, let's say an aye.
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 Contrary, motion period.
And then just to give a little construction update, um, things are progressing pretty well on, uh, M thirty-three, the Denham Willie Road. They have all, got all the milling done last week. Um, so they're starting on their base widening this morning, so down by Denham, working more north. Um, so hopefully by the end of the week, they'll have that done. And then next week, they'll both start putting the, the intermediate lift of asphalt on, so, um, going pretty well so far.
Three-week project, probably?
Um, probably six weeks.
It'd be, it'd be at least four, and by the time they get everything done, it'd be, it'd probably be five. Uh, I, I can see them getting done in five if the weather holds. I mean, things are, they're getting, really getting after it. They're working long days, so.
So they did the milling and then now do they do the, the extensions on the sides and then work their way in?
Right, so they.
Outside and then in?
So the base widening, they'll, they'll take out five inches of, of the rock gravel shoulder. Um, just placing on the side, except for where there's intersections and foreign places will catch that and haul it off. Um, then they'll put the asphalt in as they go, five inches thick to match the existing surface, the new existing surface of the asphalt. And then they'll come back and put an intermediate lift across the whole thing from the, the base that they put on all the way across the road, so. You know, thirty, thirty foot top all the way across, inch and a half. And then they'll come back and do the final lift of asphalt, thirty foot wide, inch and a half. They'll do it half lanes, obviously not full width, but, um, two lifts across the whole thing, so. Um, this week it'll be just that base widening. So they won't be putting anything on the main part of the road, just that widened four-foot section, so.
So the pilot cars, twelve hours a day, are they working sunrise, sunset?
They, they normally start a half hour after sunrise and they quit half hour before sunset. If, if they get done a little bit sooner or a little bit later, based on where they're trying to get, they will, but, um, that's base. It's, it is a long day, yep.
So are they repurposing what they're milling on?
The millings are all going to the, the plant site and that goes, that wrap goes back in the asphalt next to help make it cheaper for us.
Plant site?
Uh, uh, the block pit, um, east of, south of Wood. We did put dust control down on, uh, in front of all the intersections and, uh, residences, um, on two fiftieth and two eightieth street. That's two of the hall roads that they're using. They're hauling the millings across there and they'll be hauling asphalt across those two roads as well. Unfortunately, no good paved road across unless you go all the way down to one forty-one, all the way up to thirty, so. They will be using, uh, highway thirty for some of it, but a lot of it will be on two fiftieth and two eightieth, so.
You said five inches they're taking out of the shoulder.
Mm-hmm.
They took more, more out.
I think five is, I think five's been the norm because then when you, you told her you got eight inches of asphalt altogether when it's all said and done, I think.
Same to me, I, I was watching. My recall, they took out more.
That's, that's the general process they've done.
I'm guessing it was five inches.
And, and they could get thicker in some places, get five to five and a half or six, based on what they're milling out, but that's, what they're shooting for is a minimum of five.
Second, present us a couple of challenging spots, be closer to that, and south of Lake, but if shoulder is quietest.
I, I think we'll be good with the, with the four foot. That's why we did all the dirt work we did last summer. Um, and we tried to make sure we had six to seven foot everywhere, so there was a, a little bit of a ledge beyond that, that paved shoulder. Um, I think everywhere we had four foot before, so what we're milling out is virgin material, basically, so I, I don't think we will. Um, there will be places that will look like it drops off after that paved shoulder when it's all said and done, but, and there's other ones where there's going to be three, four foot.
Are they just rolling that off or are they trying?
They, they try to stack it right on that edge, and then once they're done with the asphalt and done with the project, we'll come back in with a mortar grater and blade it back.
Yes, for, for that blade between the asphalt and the.
And the dirt grass shoulder.
Leavely.
Yep, exactly. And there will be places we'll have to haul back in to, on intersections or residences and whatnot and kind of dress that up back up again as well.
Well, don't they all know when they do that edge, it's not as straight as kind of tape, like you?
It is. They have it called a safety edge where they have like a forty-five degree angle coming down, and that does help quite a bit. Just even if there isn't a, a rock there, it's a lot more gentle trying to come back on if you wouldn't fall off that edge. Uh, the other project we got going on is the patching down Old Seventy-three. That's going well as, as well. Um, hopefully, if everything works out, we'll be done patching that by the end of the week. Uh, we'll be open, but by early, early next week, hopefully, we can get that back open up to traffic again, so. Um, it's, uh, going well, just some, a couple of pretty long stretches that were really deteriorated and falling apart, so.
This is Norris doing the work on.
Norris is doing the work on this. Um, Manats is actually doing the milling for them, a subcontractor, but they're, Norris is doing the asphalt.
I've always seen Manats trucks. I was kind of curious why they were, but that, well, must kind of.
And that's typical. I mean, I, almost every asphalt company uses Manats at some point in time. They, they have a, a, a few milling crews that they, they really get after it and do a good job, so it's just a matter of, uh, I guess where the mills are at and who can, who can do it cheaper, but.
So are they, is Norris, have they improved their technology, like inroads, where they use the center dumps, or they started using dump trucks?
Um, I think they use, they use a variety of trucks. I think generally what they use is they have a pickup machine where they're dumping on the road and the pickup machines pick up the asphalt. That way they can be consistent with what they're doing.
Center dump then.
Right, well, they've used lots of different trucks. They have, they have some semis, they have some, at least when they're hauling mill.
They're not, but they're not, they're not hooking on to the field.
No, no.
And that's.
One continuous.
That was pretty impressive when they did that.
Yep.
You don't get that.
Right.
Right.
Adjustment you get.
Say they just pick it up and.
Right. I think especially you get a longer stretch of road like this, there's more and more trying to go to that, as long as the, the biggest thing is finding trucks, to try to stay ahead of them. I mean, trucking is obviously still.
Well, there was some pretty big gaps up there. I noticed that.
Yep.
Yeah, they set for a while and wait.
And it all depends on how far they're hauling from too, that's the other part, so. But, no, I believe that's the way they're going to do it for this one, so. Uh, the other little, little job that we're going to do, we do have a pipe to relay on the airport road south of thirty, so we're going to be closing that road down for a day to, to relay a pipe. We have a concrete pipe that's separating, so we're going to, uh, open that up and coil it and tie the joints back together and, and, uh, get it put back together.
Do you know about what we're going to do to do that?
The plan is for tomorrow.
Where's this at?
It won't make the paper in time, Rich.
Nah, make the review.
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be, it's, it's, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it's about a thousand feet roughly or fifty hundred feet south of thirty. It's not too far from highway thirty, it's in that, in that first map. But it'd be open by, by the end of the day, so we're going to put back again, so. Nice thing about having asphalt that close, we can pile that together, so. We won't have the surface, there'll be a bump, but we'll get the basin.
And you see the Hillbrook projects this fall more?
Yeah, they really haven't given us a hard date, but it, it more than likely to be, I guess, September, October-ish, but it really depends. It's the same, same contractor that was doing the work up in Crawford County, but they have a lot of work they're doing up there. Um, so it kind of, I'm assuming it'll happen when that project gets done. Um, not to say there couldn't be a window in the middle where they need to pull off or something, then maybe they'll come over, but more than likely to be when they're done in Crawford County.
Is that asphalt then coming from?
Their plant is set up at Howlett's up in Wall Lake, so it'll be coming from up there.
And they just started researching that.
Yeah, they've been working on milling and doing other things, but they've, in the last couple of weeks, they've kind of gotten to go last week. So, and they got a lot to do.
Yeah, they got a lot, a lot to do.
Anything else?
It's all we got.
What, what are the things for you, Zach? And did you get a call from Tommy Beating last week, Thursday or Friday? Later.
Okay.
The, I think the brick can be taped in, and I think there's some block.
Okay.
There might be some chunks of short steel.
Yep.
We paid for it. It might be for a bridge project or shore of whatever you want.
Yep.
They can choose what you want out of there.
Okay.
We're getting pretty close.
Nope, we'll get with someone now.
If you get, had Paul come up and take a look at the parking lot.
I did. We did look at that a little bit. I'm glad you brought that up. Um, we just did some really rough calculations and I think we're, we're well under twenty percent of what you'd have to patch. So I think patching would be a good deal.
Okay.
So I think there's some opportunity there that we can do that. We can go out and look at it, what we're talking about sometime.
Okay.
But, uh, I think it'd definitely be a viable solution to.
Patch it.
To, some, it's certain joints, certain areas that are worse than others, and that is why I'd like to show you, because I think it'd be something we could, we could accomplish and make it be relatively, uh, relatively good, good parking lot again.
Okay. Okay. That, just, I, I've been visiting with a couple of different people and, uh, they gave me some names and numbers. That ball looks great, but if we can patch and probably get it done for the dollars, I mean, it's going to come down to the dollars and cents.
And the biggest thing is, it's getting that base. If you, if you overlay on top of those joints, it's going to, it's going to bust them through and you're, you're not going to be happy within five years.
One guy told me the best way to do is just move all the concrete, start off, but he says it'll be a larger check, so.
So, so the patching is going to be concrete?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's, that's what I would recommend if you're going to, I mean, to put that.
Cut it out.
Yep.
Where's the quill?
Like I said, there's, it's longer, it's like a longer, it's like strips almost, it's kind of where it's bad, and I think we could accomplish a lot with that, and then it wouldn't be, hopefully be not quite as much the patchwork, probably be larger areas. There's some that are smaller, but, yeah, we, we can walk around and look at it if we want it.
So you wouldn't have researched any.
I wouldn't, not at this time, I wouldn't.
Just patch it.
Because there's a lot of it that's really, the service is really pretty good, but it's really not that bad.
You might want to keep in mind the list of vendors that you think that we could.
Yep.
Call and have them come give us in the time.
Yep.
When we get a little bit, a little bit further along here.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Yeah, the fence is gone.
Yeah.
It's a free fall.
Never, it wasn't even luck. Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, next we have is the Veterans Affairs. I don't know if you're going to put some good money.
Whoa, Felix.
How about me?
My name's Tonya Bates. I'm the Veterans Service Officer for the Carroll County Veterans Affairs Office. Um, with me today, I have my chair commissioner, Jim Brigman, and our, also another commissioner of ours, we have a total of three, um, no one was able to make it today, and this was Joanne Thomas. Um, and then I brought a veteran, um, Dwayne Otto, um, who's in Carroll County. Um, also, I'd like to submit, I have three statements from, um, veterans in Carroll County and then a spouse of a veteran that they wanted to share some statements with. Yep. So, um, the commissioners that are here to propose that the Veterans Affairs Office be open full-time hours, teaching the increase of veterans coming to our office. Um, we would do a lot more outreach that, um, as it done prior. With COVID, it was a little hard. Um, so we did some radio ads and stuff in the paper, and now when things started opening up again, I started attending American Legion County, American Legion meetings and the auxiliary and um, making contacts with the ten nursing homes and assistive living in Carroll County, so you can obviously veterans there that let them know that there's support. But a lot of the veterans, um, in Carroll County didn't even know our office existed. And so, you know, we're a mountain of travels far, especially if they have a good experience when I help them with claims or whatever, so. It's real important, um, for outreach. That's, that's a very important part of the job. And so my goal is saying, oh, the elders, nursing homes, assistive living, let them know I'm here. Um, I'm, this week I, I'm going to assistive living to do a presentation and, you know, especially the assistive living because that's all private pay. And so if they can get some, you know, extra money from the VA, some, you know, pension, either survivor's pension or veterans pension, then they can stay at assistive living longer, and that's really important for them to have better quality of life, because otherwise their income goes down and they have to go on Medicaid and go to nursing homes, so, yeah, that's, I feel like that's really important for them, you know, so they can stay longer. Um, I don't know if everybody got a chance to look at the PowerPoint that I sent out to you. It just kind of shows the increase. I put some of that outreach stuff, um. Yeah, so. Um, I, I started September of last year and, you know, at that time and shortly after, there was a total of forty veteran service officers, forty counties that got new service officers. So a lot of us were just learning, and so they, in February last year, we went to La Mars and they did a training, special training for us, which was very beneficial. Um, then in March, I did my national accreditation, which I have to do to get the ten thousand dollars allowance that we get. Um, so, that's the first couple slides there, and then I just kind of wrote, um, some things down that we did for local outreach that we've done. Um, like I said, you know, for the COVID was. Um, like I said, you know, for the COVID was radio, um, newspaper ads, we make ID cards, we advertise that. Um. Then, you know, we started going to the meetings. Um, there was a COVID shot clinic in Dennison that I helped out with. There was a few Carroll County veterans that went over there also. So we did that and. Um, let's see. Yes, I also get like an update about every other month on the hand dodge of veterans that are just newly discharged. So I, I have some postcards that look like my, um, business cards that they all say, you know, we support our veterans. I send those out to let them know, hey, there's benefits here because a lot of them don't even know they get benefits or, you know, there's benefits from the time they get out of service until death or after for the spouse. So, um, if they can go to school, you know, they can get homes or whatever. Um. And then for the future outreach, uh, I'm gonna, I'm a sponsor for the Carroll Senior Fund Day in Salt Lake in September. So every time that they advertise on the radio or whatever, they'll mention the Carroll County Veterans Affairs Office. I get the word out there. They have a special little thing for the veterans there. They do a penny. And so I'm gonna hand out some bags and match the American Legion, uh, auxiliary and Clinton had donated some gift cards. So we're gonna put those in with them. So make them a little special for them. Um, I'm working with Louise Galbert, the Crawford County Veteran Service Officer and also a girl in Mil Health. And so we've talked to, um, Brenda Sopransky, who is a representative for Joni Urst. And so we're trying to get to Carroll Crawford County Veteran Appreciation Day. So I'll have it like, either in Arcadia or West Side, somewhere in the middle and do like a grill out. We're hoping that Joni Urst will come. It's a lot of veterans want her to come. And so right now we're working with a scheduler for her. And so hopefully that'll be like the end of September. Actually, we're working for that. Um. The next slide, we've just kind of talked about the claims that I do that bring money into Carroll County. So that's service connected compensation. Uh, veterans pension or surviving spouse. Um, and then. So in bottom on the red, I said, told all VA forms, there's tons of VA forms. So I'm gonna have some trouble or some other ones. Um. So every claim, there might be like five or three to five or more, um, other VA forms that go along with it. Highlighted are the ones that are used most often. Um, so in this, um, PowerPoint in red, I put the total of the VA forms completed since my hire date, which was two hundred and sixty-two. Um, prior to me, the nine months was eighty-one. Um, and that's just again, because, you know, I'm getting out there for outreach and doing all that kind of thing. Um.
Say that again. You've done two hundred and sixty-two?
Since I, yeah, the nine months.
Versus eighty-one?
Eighty-one prior to me. Yeah. So, and like I said, that's a lot with outreach, but that's what makes the difference. A lot of people know we're here. Um, but as you can see, there's a lot of VA forms. Um. So I mean, that could be a core dependency or they need a BD two fourteen or, you know, burial benefits. There's just all kinds of different, um, things that we use. So, um, on the next slide, I just went through, starting last January, um, we started getting monthly reports of how much money is actually coming in. To Carroll County through the dis, the compensation, which is for disability pay or the veteran pension. Um, D I C, which means, um, dependent in terms of the compensation. And that's for, um, veterans' spouses that the veteran passed away from a service connected disability or they, um, passed away during service. The other one, they call death pension, but it's also known as survivor's pension. And that is income based. So, um, the spouse has to provide the health. The veteran's spouse has to write the assets, make them that they come in. And then there's like a hundred thirty thousand dollars threshold they have to be underneath that. And if they are, then they are able to, um, get some money coming in to help them support us and so help their nursing home or even have like home care come in their house or whatever they need to have. Then, um, the other part is the medical, you know, help get veterans in, get them service connected, get them in the, um, medical system so they can go up to the, you know, CBAC. Um, that was known as the VA clinic up at Sandy Anthony's. Um, CBAC stands for Community Based Alpatient Clinic. Um. So, you know, if they're not service connected, then it, it depends on when they served. They're on my plane up there, been exposed to certain things, war period. If that doesn't qualify them, then they, goes by their income. And then send it in. Um, also like every two years, then they have to get updated, you know, just to make sure that their address, everything's correct. And a lot of times I'll give people, the veterans come down from CBAC, they refer, um, to come down and get upgraded or I get a lot of people that go up to CBAC to get help for planes or anything like that. And then they refer them to us. And that was the, the other thing that, you know, is huge because if they come from out of town or, you know, say Manning or wherever, and they go up to the CBAC and then they come down to my office, I'm closed. I have to make another trip. And so our hours are from nine AM to one PM. So if they come in the afternoon, they have to make another trip. A lot of veterans have to find rides. They can't drive. Um, or, you know, price of gas is even higher. Sometimes they work, some veterans just don't, you know, due to their service connected, uh, disability, they have insomnia. So they're up all night. And they, you know, they don't go to sleep till six in the morning and get up at noon or eleven or whatever and may function better in the afternoon. So there's just a lot of different factors. Um. On the next slide, I just kind of listed all the CBACs in Iowa in their county and then how many hours the veteran service officer works in those counties, such as myself. Um, Carroll and Shenandoah are the only two counties for twenty hours. Um, a tonne is thirty-five hours, but that's considered multiannual. And. So our Carroll is bigger than Shenandoah and I'm just really filled with having a CBAC. Again, we should be open and be accessible to the veterans. Um. If there's anything I'm saying up in.
You're doing, you're doing great.
Um, every day I keep track of how many phone calls I get from veterans, how many calls I make, how many people walk in, how many scheduled appointments, just so we can see, you know, the need for our office and, or the difference. Like when I do outreach, is there more veterans that come in now or is there not or why? Or so I kind of just like made a graph from, um, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Kind of shows scheduled and walk-in visits. Um, February, I did go to a county meeting. So that was, uh, I mean, April, um, it was an auxiliary meeting I went to, but it just kind of helps us see the difference that it does make. And like I said, you know, once you do, I do that and get the word out and all that, word of mouth really travels fast. So you get a lot of phone calls, say, someone referred me here, my buddy, or, you know, my neighbor is a veteran or whatever. Um, the next one is the incoming phone calls, which is constant, which, which is really good. I'm really excited about that. So. Um, it's, next, um, this, this is the projected cost of my salary now and I was like, uh, in the health insurance. Um, I did keep the health insurance for individual policy in our budget. I'm currently not taking the insurance, so on another one, but just in case something may happen, I want to have that money there. Um, if I do down the road need health insurance, then, um, I do the one with the boy with children, not a family. So. Um, and then I just kind of the difference there. Um, I leave as my secretary and that kind of shows what she, um, how much purse is. Um, and with that ten thousand allocation money, you know, we, I use a lot of for outreach, things that we need in the office. Um, but that can also be used for my wages. Um, so. I'm thinking either sixty-five hundred to seven thousand three towards my wages because we do a newsletter twice a year and has a thousand dollars, um, each newsletter. For all the veterans we have to send out to. And then I have a testable extra money for outreach. Um, the veterans just, you know, we have like little lights or racks, veterans pins, whatever. And that gets the word out and, and they enjoy those. They look forward to those. And we go to the Legion meetings, we're like, what'd you bring in? And so.
You have an extra one of those?
Yeah. So, you know, it's, it's, it's just something fun and nice. And when they come in and do a claim, you know, I'll give them a little something. Um, we do calendars too. Um, I went to the veteran breakfast, the day breakfast, um, it's from six to eleven AM. And we hand out calendars and different type of things and they really enjoy that too. Um, last page is just, uh, my downtime since I've started and I'm at ninety-eight hours. And I know that doesn't justify full-time hours, but it does show that there is a need for more, you know, hours. But like I said, once I start digging out to all the nursing homes, assistive living, we're gonna need the time hours and I need to be there for the veterans that do come to our office and I'm not there. And then a lot of times if they do come, they don't come back until they do get that help that they need or deserve. So. Um. I don't know if there's any questions or. How many vets are in Carroll County? Do you know that one? I'm not real sure, but I will. It's.
That's what I was wondering too. That was an impression I was gonna ask. It's not on that form, that state form.
On that.
And I think, yeah, whatever they call it.
Yeah, it probably is. Yeah.
It'd be interesting to know that number, how many have received services or people and how many don't even know we offer those services.
Because that's very, as people come in and go out. Um, but I think it is on that state form. I remember last year. You got it, I don't have one.
G D O.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep.
Who do you work with at CBAC? CBAC, is it Ann? She one of them?
She's the doctor up there. Yep, yep. I get mostly it's Tom or the nurses, but then doctors also would give my card out. I would make sure my card's up there and. Um, I'm looking forward to doing like a pamphlet too to get, have up there. The other thing that we just found out and I'm really excited about is we got notified by Hy-Vee and the Carroll County Veterans Affairs Office was chose as a non-credit for August. So anytime that somebody has a red bag, then, um, a dollar goes to Carroll County Veterans Affairs. So. So I'm gonna kind of make a supplier for that. Let your friend know about that. So.
And you said you do do the senior day.
I don't. So I'm like, yep.
Who do you use those funds from? How you do it for?
Who do you?
You said you get a, they get a, a second to get a suit and dollar.
Yeah. So the thing is like two dollars maybe.
So what, what's that dollar go toward when you receive it?
When I receive it?
Yeah. Two individuals.
Yeah, it'll go on the veteran. Yep, definitely what we use for the veterans. If they need help or assistance or maybe they need a gas card or maybe they need something like that. Uh, something to be bought to eat or whatever they need.
Earlier you alluded to eighty-one people. And, and was that, was that in a year or is it a quarterly?
That was nine months.
Nine months.
Prior. And I just said nine months from my.
And now you're two sixty-two and nine months basically the same.
Yep.
Time frame.
Yep.
Is this, do you think this is going to be a cyclical thing where you go through a large group? For a period until we kind of get maybe caught up from where we were before? And then that number will come down? Or do you think this is just, uh, two sixty to three fifty a year on an online basis?
I think the online basis.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, you always have more veterans getting, I mean, there's always some getting out of the service somewhere along the line. You're, you have to let them know what's going on in the county.
That's figured. That eighteen months on that, I don't know where that figure's taken in my head.
For that?
Yeah. And don't call me on that. But there's a, there's a place, there's a, they just show them what money they got in and also has the number of veterans. Sorry, I didn't really do it. Yeah. And I agree with you, but I don't know why that's stuck in my head. I can't give you.
So the current hours you close at one o'clock, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
And with your proposed new additional hours, you would be open nine to five, Monday through Friday?
Eight to four thirty.
Eight to four. Okay.
Yep.
So do you think that, um, you know, talk about the number of vets? So obviously, uh, World War II vets are. And so, so you get up to the Vietnam conflict. There has to be, that has to be a large portion of what we're talking about.
That and Gulf War.
And the Gulf War.
Yeah.
There's a fair amount of Korean.
It's not like.
There's probably, yeah, probably a fair amount of Korean vets too, I suppose. Yeah. So I mean, I think, I think it's probably, you know, after you get through the Korean and the Vietnam thing, I would assume that they would probably go on a little bit. But that, that could be a long time.
Yeah, we have almost a thirty-year conflict with Afghanistan and Iraq.
Yeah, but that wasn't.
But the numbers weren't as high.
Right. I mean, that was volunteer. That wasn't, wasn't a draft like, you know, Vietnam was. I mean, that just took a lot of numbers.
If you had a lot of three to four tour people in that group versus Vietnam was, uh, you most of them would want to work.
But it was cute too.
I find there's a lot of women joining now that women are joined. That's for sure.
Mm-hmm.
And that has to get out there too.
So how does, how does your office over there work? I mean, can they find you?
I don't know where that. It's kind of hard to find, but I don't know where that. Yeah. It's where the bottom of the H E S code is. So. There's no sign or anything out there except for on the door, you know, I think it's.
Sure.
But.
You know, also, you've been spending more miles on the van and taking people.
Yes, it's finally.
So that's what you've got into some of your office hours and also if you're obviously, uh, these are going to Des Moines Metro or Omaha.
Of course, yeah. Dennison usually does, um, Omaha. We do Des Moines and CBAC even. Like some, I have, I had a veteran that, you know, had radiation to be there every single day at CBAC and he was from out of town. So we almost constantly. Um, since COVID, uh, it's kind of slowed down. The van's been going a lot more. For, for a while there was, you know, nothing. So. We're, yeah, it does get that enough, you know, diverse really, yeah.
Is that provided by the, uh, Veterans Association, that van, by what groups are talking about?
Yeah, all the expenses to go with that. That's all. I guess I haven't ever seen anything on it. I guess I never really, I'm still right now.
I'm here to look to do different things because of mileage, sorry for the big stuff. Just keep my, you know. Cause I don't know if they're gonna have that.
I don't know whether it goes. Continue this program. And I don't know whether that's something that the regional council or government would help pick up or not. I mean, that stuff.
Well, I think it was. I don't think we've ever, I mean, yeah. I don't feel like those.
So you're looking to increase your hours and provide more service, um, full-time versus part-time? I was just showing Dean, we are going to have to amend the budget. Correct? Cause for salaries right now, we have thirty-one thousand, hundred and eighty-five.
So we're looking at, um. Thirty-nine, nine, seventy-five, is that correct?
Yeah.
Maybe thirty-seven.
Would you utilize more time with the also? Your system hurts. Just keep saying.
Yeah.
And obviously if you're counting hours on your current twenty hour a week schedule, you're never gonna be able to use those.
Yeah. My goal is, um, to either start August first or by fifteenth full-time. So in between there, I have to use a little bit here and there. Otherwise I'll lose it. So. You know, even when I go to training and stuff, I automatically get downtime. It's, you know, and I go to spring training, morning or whatever, I'm gone for two, three days and it all adds up. So.
Any other questions or comments?
One might just think she deserves. She's really been putting the effort out to. She's really been putting the effort out to get out to the veterans and that's what they need. We need, we needed to know about it. I didn't even know some of this stuff. Well, no, I, I, I didn't hear about it.
So are you a veteran or are you a?
I'm a veteran.
You're okay?
Yes, Vietnam veteran. Oh, I wasn't a Vietnam veteran.
During that era?
Yes. I was in Washington DC.
That can be just a bad... Absolutely works.
I've worked with a helicopter engine, so we're in Vietnam, so...
Well, I've, I've heard a lot of good things about what she's been doing and stuff that, uh, I think there's definitely been a big improvement as far as outreach and making the Veterans Affairs be known. And I think some of these numbers show that there's been more people following up on it. And I think Veterans Affairs, regardless of what they think is going to hire or lower, there's gonna be some like that, but I think it's always gonna be there. We're always gonna have veterans, I think, and, uh, I think, anybody else have any comments?
On this sheet right here, the compensation sheet?
Yes.
Do you have, do you have a history of, uh, what was paid and, you know, like, saved?
For so many years back?
Yeah.
That's part of that, uh...
That's part of that other form.
That G form, and I can't, I got a copy of it.
So they're saying you can get something?
You can get that online.
Okay, all right. Because I, you know, I, I'd like to see that and see how, I mean, that's gonna be reflective on, on, you know, the outreach that you've done and, and how you make people more aware of the benefits. I, and I, I would agree with Gina, this is impressive to me, you know, to, to, um, to have somebody who's actually making a difference, so...
I guess the only comment I have to say is thank you. Thank you for your service and I, obviously, these numbers, it's almost disappointing to see that we didn't have that outreach and all that action for her. This is a big, this is a big thing and it's a very important thing to know if those services exist or that you exist or, you know, whether we have to move you over here to make you more accessible or whatever that is in the future, that type of...
Well, that's why I asked a question.
Yep. It's a great question.
Yeah.
So, thank you, I don't see a problem with this.
Got a comment. I was gonna make a comment on, uh, there's gonna be a bill. I don't know if it hasn't reached the Senate yet, but they're gonna open up the presumptive conditions, uh, more cases of, uh, health reasons. And include with the ones that are already mentioned, and I think there'll be nineteen total, um, like heart condition, diabetes, hypopresure, bladder cancer, prostate cancer. Prostate. So there's gonna be more claims, you know, as they open up those presumptive conditions of veterans. And we're gonna stick really close.
There are gonna be one of them.
Very good, it's gonna be really close to the other one. Well, and, and probably maybe some of you don't know this, but it's not, this thing kind of goes out beyond veterans. There's benefits here for like soul, uh, this dependent children and things like that of veterans. So this thing reaches out a long ways, so it's not just veterans we're dealing with. Right?
Well, you don't, you don't go there, you're not that right.
Okay, is there any other comments?
I just have one question, when would we amend the budget then? Would that be in, tie that in with the next, I mean?
Right with the next budget.
Well, yeah, I think I have, will probably be the one in September.
Okay.
Obviously, the budget of mine was...
There's enough, yeah.
Yeah.
That's my question.
Yes, hoping to have that in September or last part of August. Because we already have a few things we've already done that need to be changed in my year.
I have no problem with it. I, I think it should be a full-time position by the services that are being rendered.
Okay. Is there a decision to be made here today, Jim?
I was wanting to make a motion to approve Tommy and Lynn's, that's right, late, as full-time, um, for veterans of yours.
From eight to four thirty? Well, I'd love to put that time because their times are out of function.
Hold on. So then the pay would be reflected on the increase in those hours?
Yes.
At the current hourly pay or whatever?
When, when would that be effective? I guess I just want to say...
Let's, let's go to August first, or it doesn't make much difference. Okay? Is there a second for that?
A second then? And so that, all that was in, in your motion, correct?
Yeah. I did not have August first, so...
Yeah.
Reable? Hammer down, any other further questions? If not, all over favor, say five, say an eye?
Eye.
Contrary, motion carried. Again, I want to thank you, um, I have been very impressed with your service. When we hired you, uh, you got, it was kind of higher on contingency with the COVID that we obviously didn't think you were gonna get your training in. And to much the amazement of myself and everybody else, you got done on record time. That's all to you. Thank you guys all for your service, also.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Could I bring up, yes, uh, on the recording, has been called the office, and I'd like to have Tony, uh, voice heard instead of the previous? That has been brought up and Dalton?
Dalton's working on it, yeah. It's, we get it. The freaking, the freaking...
Oh, the, yeah, so, yeah. That's one of the... Part of the thing is we get this info system and we fit. We've been trying to get it, take it off and get a new one on, but it hasn't been working. And I brought that up several times, okay? Because I, yes, I don't, uh, um, importantly.
So we would just need a letter from you stating that it will be a full-time position for them August first and for payroll. Can I just bring that in before sometime?
You guys noted that in your board, your minutes? Why not? Have you noted that in your minutes, too, also about extra hours?
Yeah.
If you have a, would you want to copy that, too?
That's fine, it just, we need something here.
Just so we know, well, I think sort of the track going back. Yeah, she's, she's been tracking all our hours, it's the first thing we do, just to make sure that everything documented. But I mean, not that you guys also, that your board is, so we can put it in our audit report when the auditor comes through, you guys.
Where's that at?
It's a little covered by... Odd, odd, it's kind of...
That's a stick-up scenario. I said with the crossfire, right? Nice.
You're welcome.
I thought we bonded on Friday.
You just remembered, you know, way to go, you got three point nine. You got a good, like, so, I don't know where I are all, but... All right, thank you, Zim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us eat our meat.
Yous are always welcome. Okay. We will go to Dalton. Thank you.
I see you, Harman, I can't hear you.
Okay. Okay, so the IP quarterly report just covers the last part of quarter four of fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, had a few projects that we've been working on. You guys have seen the door lock project we're doing for the automated doors. Um, that was finished this quarter, so I'll talk about that next, but, uh, we've worked on the workup on that, started to get the locks and stuff installed, um, last quarter. Of course, we're always doing Windows server and PC updates. We have, uh, the comm center UPS went out, we assisted in getting the UPS fixed there. That's a battery backup for like their network. We're working on the phone project, um, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, getting new phones in the courthouse. We did a workup for that. Um, and I think we started getting the system last month, uh, like the server set and stuff like that, but phones were installed until this month. Um, working on a carrier swap for the sheriff, um, they're switching from Verizon to AT&amp;T FirstNet. And that came with its own set of GPS issues we're caused by switching carriers that are troubleshooting.
Going from the new?
Going from Verizon to AT&amp;T. It's a matter of priority as far as bandwidth goes. Going to AT&amp;T, our network has priority over everybody. So if there is a natural disaster, they actually have a separate network that's launched for the law enforcement agencies. Where a bunch of phone calls are going on in Carroll County. Our guys have perfect connection and don't see any lag in connection, so. It was an overender going to this, uh, connection for the backup and relatively the same cost. Better, uh, coverage, we went to ninety-nine percent coverage in Carroll County. Before, the guys would be dropping calls going down south on seventy-one. It wouldn't have any signal, we couldn't see them in their tracking program. Now it's full bar all the way, so it was definitely a good move. Um, the BA, Veterans Affairs, did get a new fax machine. We worked on getting that in, had a few issues with it, had to send it back and swap it, swap it out. Um, we did do the ten gig upgrade on the courthouse for the, uh, actual local area network. So we were at one gig before, now we're at ten gigs, um, to connect back to the servers and move your files across the network. So all employees should see, um, much faster speeds getting into their files. Um, we threw a rack mount up in Zach's office, that's important because it's gonna connect us back to the jail. Um, we gotta have somewhere where those two networks connect together. So they're pulling a fiber over from the jail, we're gonna land it there and then I'll have a fiber there to have that where our network starts. Um, you saw that we do have some, uh, plugins probably going in on, on here on the ground floor, um, and up on the first floor. We're gonna be mounting TVs on the first floor and the, um, ground floor. Those will have some ads that was put on by, um, Carrie downstairs. She got some sort of grant to get those. Um, we did establish twenty-eight E with Crawford County, so, uh, we, I brought that to you guys before. If they need anything, obviously, we'll help them out now with IP services.
So on that TVs, where are they gonna be mounted at?
Oh, we got one here down at the bottom of the stairs, um, as you're coming down to the sheriff's office. And then the other one's gonna be up, uh, as you're walking in, it'll be on your left-hand side, right in front of the, um, reporter's office. So, uh, just go up the four stairs there. So then we'll be able to put it...
Put some things on there?
Yep. So, it'll be good to have that, we can walk in and see, see what we're doing a little bit.
Well, we could have access to that to post the, uh, uh, board dinners, board, board meeting, you know, all that stuff rather than place it on the door, is that acceptable position?
Can you read the agenda?
Yeah, the agenda has to be posted.
Manually bound, please.
But you could put it on there, um, I don't know, I think more of that's just gonna be kind of a directory for people where, you know, obviously, like, we're gonna be close on a day, you could have that scrolling across, but, you know. I know a lot of it's going to be environmental health things because it was their grant money that they...
Agenda all down.
Which is totally fine, I mean, they're in the basement, so people don't know where they're at.
Yeah, I know, you don't get it.
Um, so, I mean, you probably could put the agenda on there, but I don't know.
The, maybe they're, 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 they're the danger, I am mean, so...
Yeah, you could have that.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you're gonna have scrolling and then you could have something dropped down like the agenda for three seconds and...
Yeah.
Four, five seconds and then go back up again.
Shade reader.
Shade reader. Well, at least you know it's gonna repeat at some point in time.
We're going to have, like, maybe each department listed on there and, you know, under the supervision, you could say Carroll County Water Supervisors, Board Meetings, Monday, nine AM.
Nine AM.
You know, and...
Sure.
But I don't really know what the program looks like to program TVs or anything, so...
Not yet. So we're, we're, we're gonna launch new stuff, we're, we're using an open source platform called Raspberry Pis. So it saves us all the money if I don't have to go through a vendor.
Lost the idea. We're lost it.
I think you love it.
My stomach just froze.
All right, I'm done explaining it. But should be a pretty easy software for everybody to get into who needs to post stuff, so, cool. That's really all I have for the quarterly report. Any questions, we're done?
So are you done with your part of going digital for the comm center?
Going di, oh, what do you mean going digital for the comm?
For the new radio system?
Oh, yeah. I mean, everything's pretty much up and going, Jason's taking care of most of that, that's, it was his project, so. I know last week he was out most of the week.
Training, I think.
Training, yeah. So, but I, from my understanding, they have it up, I'm working and, uh, like, we can work with this, we have a talk group, so. Are you guys ready to talk about ransomware?
Sure.
You want to approve the quarterly report, you decided?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to accept the quarterly report?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
You got a firewall next?
Then, then second, any further discussion?
Let's talk about ransomware.
Five, six, five, say an eye?
Eye.
Eye.
Contrary?
Motion carried.
Okay, now, sorry. You want, let's talk around ransomware first and then we can talk about the firewall, because that kind of protects us from ransomware, so. Okay, got an actual quick presentation here for you guys, just about ransomware in Carroll County. No, we were not. Ransomware, that's what it is, like.
Let's keep it that way.
Yes, sir.
What less that looks like?
Her stomach's talking over her, it's like, wow. Did you hear the truth of that? I didn't either, I just, I just ran out.
I'm like, oh, Raspberry Pis, that's what they're...
My balls. All right, then put this together for us, just a few quick tidbits on our county and ransomware. So here's some ransomware facts, um, a lot of it comes out through email anymore. That's why I always send everybody the fake emails and you click it and you feel bad about yourself. But I'd really have you guys click my emails and be scared than not be aware. A lot of payouts been happening for ransomware, unfortunately. So world record right now is forty million dollars for ransomware. Average, five hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a year, um, in ransoms usually. Most of that tax are, are through email. They do do some RDP vulnerabilities, which really nobody has to worry, worry about anymore, um, because most people have firewalls in place to protect them from that. Back to the email thing, a lot of it comes through email, so one in six thousand emails contain a suspicious URL that points you back towards ransomware or something else malicious that's gonna mess up your computer, which is no bueno. Here's some, uh, recent payout, uh, they demanded five point three million in Massachusetts. We had five hundred thousand dollars paid by Delaware County in Pennsylvania. Now, a lot of you think, why don't they just refuse to pay it? It usually costs a lot more to recover the data than it does just to pay out the fee. Um, most people have ransomware insurance where you pay your, um, pay your deductible and bet right off your losses and make sure it doesn't happen again. So I would personally rather be preemptive about it and protect ourselves. So let's talk about what we're doing here in Carroll County. Now, these are five main things that I'm, I'm doing to protect ourselves from ransomware. Most people don't do any of these, some people do one. We have five. The IDS Intrusion Detection System is a free service provided by the OCIC. They give it to anybody who is in that, in that group, um, which is most of the counties in, in Iowa. Um, that basically, I get a phone call if anybody hits a virus or anything suspicious, um, had it happen, they shut down the computer. They call my office, they, they say, hey Dalton, this computer shut down, this is what we saw. Can you go run a vi, a virus scan on it and we can get it back online? So, and I've had times where I've had to take computers out of commission, um, totally wipe them and reinstall just by FireEye's recommendation. So, really nice service to have, it saved my butt a few times, so I, I plan to continue to use it. So, really nice service to have, it saved my butt a few times, so I plan to continue to use it. We use DNS and content filtering, a lot of you don't know what that is, but what DNS is, it basically tells the internet what google.com is. So if you type in W W dot google.com is, the internet doesn't know where to point that traffic, so the DNS server says google.com goes to this IP address, so it basically directs your traffic. So what happens is, once you have ransomware in your computer, they're successfully install it, get passed of all my other, my security filters. If the ransomware is successfully installed, it can't call out and activate itself. So this is just another layer to stop. There are a lot of other cool stuff that goes into this that it does protect us from, but we're talking about ransomware today. We also have the antivirus on our computers, which is standard. It's kind of cool, we block out USB ports for a lot of people, so somebody can just bring a flash drive and shove it in the computer and shove the network down. We also do vulnerability scanning, this is also through OCIO, it's a free service provided. I get a weekly report, kind of tells me what computers on the network are vulnerable, what I need to patch. It'll even tell me like printers, I even caught people's cellphones on the guest network on this that needed a patch and went up and said, hey, your cellphone, the other day, you need a patch, you're gonna have a virus. So, kind of a cool little deal that they do on that and could save us one day, so. This is, I recently started doing this one, it was a free service offered through Datto. It's a service we pay for to access our computers remotely and do patch management. So this basically kind of works like FireEye, where if it detects ransomware trying to call out, it'll isolate and stop the process and basically shut the computer down until we give it okay. So it's one more piece of software to protect us and keep us safe. That's all I got for you on that.
Any questions?
Dalton, you asked, you just mentioned USB, outside USBs. Do you allow any USB that has been created inside our network?
Really no way to do that. I mean, not easily at least.
The sheriff's department may have some outside USBs they bring in.
Yeah, and right now, the sheriff's department is open for USBs. There's better practices to do that, like we could have like a test computer on its own isolated network to open up USBs, which is an option we can do someday, but currently, if they were to have something on a USB and plug it in, we'd hope that four of our programs would catch it, something would.
Yeah, but I'm just looking at personal things on your.
Yeah.
On your computer at your desk, stuff brought from home.
Yeah.
Pictures of kids, great kids, those kind of things, those can create, I know they're great, but they also can create some issues.
Yep, and you know, whenever a USB is actually plugged into our network, it does scan it. It's automatically scanned before it allows you to access the USB. So if it were to have something malicious in it, it'll beat it right away.
Okay.
And I know it does work, I may or may not have a few programs at my disposal for getting into computers when you get locked out, which unfortunately are considered malicious because I can reset passwords. So I've plugged my USB in before and then I look on and everything's gone. Because it'll suck it all out and eat it pretty much, so. I feel like we're protected.
Okay, very good. Does that, that just, in general, that happens?
Yep, I agree.
Yeah, don't pick one up in a parking lot and plug it into your computer.
So let's see what's on.
I, I'm an airman now, I've tested our employees on that a few times, I can create a dummy one that'll send you an email. And I dropped three of them over the course of a couple of weeks and they were back at my desk within like an hour. Everybody's pretty good about it, so I can't really complain. So let's talk about the firewalls now. Stuff for that. Turn off my presentation here. So, Western Iowa Networks unfortunately is increasing the price on their T-LANs. And what you're gonna ask me is, what is a T-LAN? So, basically, on all of our other buildings, like the Freaky Building, the ambulance, the engineer, the conservation, we would, in a perfect world, like them to talk back with our network. So, at that point, Carl and Louie had established the T-LAN connections, so basically routed all their traffic back to the courthouse at an extra cost through Western Iowa Networks. Now generally, the way I would have set it up, like if you're gonna set up originally without T-LANs, you have a firewall at each site, all the firewalls talk back to your main firewall back at the courthouse. Which is exactly why I'm bringing this proposal, because the T-LANs are getting more expensive. So, we were, I got a letter, I think it's been about two months ago, from Western Iowa Networks, and let me just pull up some numbers here for you. So currently, what we are paying now for our internet just at the courthouse, so we pay a hundred ninety-nine a month just for the internet itself. And then the connection out to the, out to the engineer is five hundred and fifty a month. We pay two fifty a month for the connection out to the Freaky Building, two fifty a month out to the ambulance, and another hundred bucks a month just for the conservation. So that's about thirteen forty-nine a month, and that was just after this, the engineer T-LAN went from four fifty to five fifty as of July first, so. That's why it's at five fifty now, so it used to be a little bit cheaper before this. Now I got a letter from Western Hour Network stating that that was going to happen, we were well aware as of June first that the five hundred mags was gonna go five fifty a month.
Is there a reason why there, why that's going up?
Um, I have a couple of theories, you know, it does save people a lot of money not to have a firewall if you don't have a tech, techie person who can take care of it. So then you only have to rely on having one firewall and you don't have to pay a vendor just for one buck firewall. So it's good in a sense, and I understand why they did it, but I think they're running out of, the way they do it on the backend, they're running out of spots, like placeholders. So I think they're making it more expensive to kind of get some people off of that. They gave me a different explanation, but yeah, it's the politics thing.
So you're talking about the security that they have?
No, I'm talking about the internet itself.
Well, their firewall though, the name of their firewall.
No, we don't use their firewall service.
Okay, gotcha. You're just talking, you're just talking basically the internet.
Yeah, the internet, this is the internet connection itself, so. And when I, like I said, when I say T-LAN, that's the connection that gets us from the courthouse back to like the engineer. And that's how they get their internet, because they get it, all internet traffic comes back to courthouse and goes out, so. But like I said, so we're at five fifty a month on the engineer T-LAN for that five hundred mags. It is actually gonna go up to seven fifty a month as of January first, twenty twenty-two. So we're gonna have another two hundred and fifty dollar a month increase. So that would put us at roughly sixteen hundred dollars a month if we were to let that happen. Now, I sent everyone a proposal for some firewalls that can replace all these T-LANs and throw us all down to the basic internet connections. Now, the courthouse before, like I said, it costs two hundred bucks a month for internet, it's still gonna be two hundred bucks a month for internet, because we have the five hundred mags coming in here, you know, T-LAN. But getting the internet out to the engineer would go from five fifty or seven fifty, or if you count the increase, down to two hundred bucks a month. So it's a significant savings just dropping it down and putting a firewall out there. Now the Freaky and the ambulance, they're two fifty a month right now, they would both also both drop down a hundred bucks a month. So, we would be going from paying about sixteen hundred dollars a month down to seven hundred dollars a month just going through the firewalls. So, and have twice the internet speed at the Freaky, ambulance and conservation, because we're going from fifty to a hundred, so. It's really a no-brainer to switch to the firewalls for me. It does give me some visibility in my network, so I can see it as a whole. Because the switches that we currently have are Maraki. And once we put Maraki firewall in, you can see that connection all the way through from end to end. You know, let me pull up that firewall, whoa, did everyone receive that? Now, I know that seems kind of pricey, but that is for six firewalls needing mine, so that's six different devices. And you're gonna ask why I need six, I'm gonna put two in here at the courthouse for redundancy. That way, if we have one of our firewalls going out of the courthouse, we have that backup.
And is this a one-time fee or is this yearly?
So, there's a one-time, that's a one-time fee to buy the equipment and stuff like that, and this is for five years with a license, if you look at it.
Yeah, I see that.
So there is not really monthly cost, that'll just cover us for five years.
So then five years again, we'll probably, it'll be an upgrade in something.
Yeah, and honestly, as cheap as they are, five years, if they're outdated, I might look at something else then. Because before, we paid ten thousand dollars just for one firewall, so.
So you're staying within your budget easily?
Easily, yeah. Well, and like I said, us saving, you know, six hundred bucks a month, it's gonna pay for itself in a year or two, easily.
All operations that we have at all sites will pass back through the courthouse.
Yep, and they do now too.
And they do now, but this will still keep us in that same position. At a lower monthly rate and, I know there's some money upfront, but we'll save money in the long haul.
Yes, and like I said, we're, they're gonna have faster internet connections.
It will increase there.
Their bandwidth, they're going from fifty to a hundred, which the ambulance has complained in the past about their internet speed, so.
Probably their billing, their life.
And so, once I get these launched, I'll be able to expand my phone system out, so I can actually have my phone system out at the conservation. They are currently on an older system right now, but I purchased enough phones to take over their phone system also.
Is there any drawbacks to the firewall versus the T-LAN?
Not that, not that I can really think of, I mean, it's another point of failure, but I mean, you already have a modem in there that could fail. So that would be my only drawback I can think of, so.
Could be some websites, and you'll find those probably, if you hit, that may look a little funky to the firewall. It might look a little bit, but once Dalton sees it, he can be able to.
And luckily, all these firewalls kind of work together, so if there's a rule or something like that that updates on the Carroll side, it updates on all of them. So if we're at, that means if I'm having an issue like with the website on the Carroll side, it'll get fixed for you too, so.
There's my assets, there's some connections we have with the DOT for programs and different things that I don't have issues with from the past that I'm sure there'd be a way around it, this will throw and get it there now.
Yeah.
First time you hit it, you might wanna get a little. It might tell you.
Just don't want to go in the last five minutes when you go against the cloud. Well, I'm looking forward to having a firewall with a little visibility that I can manage. Currently, our firewall, I honestly have to call and talk to the vendor to really do anything with. It was built on a program built on IP tables, and it's just, it's an open source platform. But I could pull it up and could use everybody to report the question, and me.
So can you monitor the usage?
I already do.
Pardon me?
I said, I already do.
So you can tell how, you know, how much Zach is using out there?
I can tell down to the device right now with my local area network because of that. So, but this will give us more greenery.
So is he using fifty meg? Is he using it?
So, honestly, Zach is five hundred mags out there, because.
But I, yeah, go ahead.
Because we have our backups that run across the network, so that's why he has so much bandwidth out there. Now, everybody else, a hundred mags is pretty standard, I mean, that's, that's gonna be enough, should be, you'd hope, but they're getting by on fifty. So, but I just know people are complaining on fifty. You have somebody like the ambulance who, they're there twenty-four hours a day and some of them are sleeping, some of them might be off shift watching Netflix, whatever, it's a lot of bandwidth going through there regardless, so.
Like, you know, I just know that some, some manager, if you can manage it, then, I mean, we've got a hundred meg at our house, but. We don't use.
If you use, you're probably using this.
Yeah, like this and you're using the, you've got your little thing, we're using about three to five meg.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so I guess the point that I'm making is, do they really need all that and?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, I think.
So I mean, they're running programs, I mean, Netflix, obviously, if we watch Netflix all the time, we had two or three kids that were, you know. We can jump that pretty quickly, but.
Understand that everything is going through there, so your Windows updates, like anything, any traffic that goes out through the internet is no longer going to Western Hour Networks, it's coming to the courthouse and then going out. So it's just a lot of traffic that's gonna be fun, you'd be surprised how fast bandwidth can stay up though. Like for instance, right now, we have five hundred mags down at the courthouse, we may not use it every day, but I can tell you there's times when I do. And that's, that's what you're preparing for is the times we can do.
Yeah.
It's kind of like water pressure, your house has, you know, thousands of pounds of water pressure coming in, if you only use two pounds. So you have the ability to expand your house out, and sometimes you might be showering and have everything on one, same thing with bandwidth. It's there when you need it, so.
Okay.
And a hundred mags down, I think is their basic package now, actually, was my understanding best here. So that is the lowest we can go, which is a hundred bucks a month, which honestly isn't crazy for a hundred mags down, so.
On an IG?
Yeah. I think at this point, I guess I'm seeking approval for the purchase of the firewalls then.
Did you have another proposal?
So when I, I did get other quotes, if you'd like to see them, the problem is, I'm really wanting to go towards Cisco. Cisco has what they call competition quoting, so once you get quoted with one person, everybody else's quote for that product is gonna be higher. They get their quotes directly through Cisco, so once you choose a vendor, what product you want, you gotta choose one vendor. I am happy to show you some other quotes on other firewalls we got. We did do one through ICE Technologies for a fournet firewall, which we looked at and it's just wasn't gonna fit our needs on the network, so it wasn't really something we considered.
James, are there any other questions to go? Any other questions or approve this?
Yeah, you know, as far as getting other quotes, I can see where there may not be another. I have some, if you have one on the quote, to be able to get and comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, I'm just asking, are they favorable?
More expensive.
They're more expensive, yeah.
A lot of times you get an apple to an orange in comparison to.
Yeah, firewalls are so funny, but I mean, they're just, they have so many different features that it's just, it's kind of like buying a car.
And what you're familiar with, of working with, is a big value and also, because otherwise you have to retrain yourself in something else, which sometimes there's only room for so much.
Oh, I think I remember Carl talking about the Maraki stuff and how it was a good stuff for, like, it's what he wanted to work with because it was like.
A comfort zone was good with it.
It is, I mean, and that's kind of what I started with too, and you've noticed I've been adapting more and more Cisco Maraki products. Like for instance, I mentioned the IDS Intrusion Detection System that actually runs off through Maraki, it's a Cisco Open DNS. So everything, that filter for web content, and so that your network can't call out, or your ransomware can't call out, that's Cisco stopping it, which is all on one dashboard. So currently I have, I like to have everything in one place, because if I'm having issues, I can look at my dashboard and it'll show you where the issues are. So the more things I pull in there, the easier it is for me to identify issues and fix my network, so.
The downfall, and I'll be honest with you, that it can happen to anybody, is corporate buyout. Someone could buy Maraki tomorrow and change the game. But that's the risk you run no matter what you buy, so.
Okay, any other questions? The motion to approve this request?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll sign it.
The move is second. Approve the purchase of firewall, that's a two. We'll get these ordered and get them in. Okay, we'll start getting the thumbs up. All right.
I think we'll be halfway through.
Yeah, we're not done yet. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. New code of arrangement.
Yep.
All right.
Thanks, Don.
Keep solving the problem.
All right.
General six percent manual discussion.
Are we, you want to go through the manual today?
Will this be with the audit then?
This came up, yes, this came up, was definitely, there was some questions that, I think they felt a little uncomfortable about. Them interjecting their research into it, they wanted to get our feeling done, but I think, is that how you understand it?
Yeah, and it's centralized around one basic thing, burial. They just want to make sure that we have an open communication between accounting and them, and what, what our. Expectations and their expectations, just making sure that they're meeting. In the manual, you'll see that she highlighted it on a couple of different areas.
I think the first question is on page ten. Is if, if we have approval for a light heat in this household, it affects this net. During the winter, more, more, more inventory. Do we deny requests to help for gas, electric, service? I feel like they're both type of. I guess.
That's what my desk. You remember exactly what your concern was there?
And if they have a. If they're getting my heat, I think. They're still qualified for benefits as long as the, the, to limit out at the one fifty bucks. I think what they're saying is if they're getting some assistance here, can they get assistance where they're? Is that where you're getting this?
I don't know why they're asking the question, because it doesn't say anything here about them being denied.
Yeah.
So a lot of these areas, she had. Specific examples of situations that came up, and that's why she's asking these questions, because I think a person may have came in. She always had. So I mean, I don't understand why, you know, if you look at, it doesn't say that they're denied because of the light heat or, you know, whatever. Who made sure of that?
Well, I was taking, I maybe taking that wrong, but they're saying that they're getting some assistance from light. Are they eligible for anything in the economy that could, let's say, for water?
I would say they shouldn't, water is not covered during the current moratorium. All of that for utilities, they can turn that off at any given moment. It's gas, electricity. That's their source of power.
Well, I see what they're saying, if it's disconnect.
Yes. Now, I think water is very important. But. That was the leverage a lot of utilities used. Speaking of municipal, a lot of water is done just, well, they've done in the municipality, but it's just, it's not connected with utilities.
Do we want to invite Ryan here?
And maybe that might be the best. To hear exactly what your concern was on that.
Well, there's a lot of questions on the burial, and I think. A lot of that's gonna have to. Judge, did you get a copy of this?
The burial one's on.
This was sent out to everybody.
I emailed it.
It was.
Yeah.
What's the title of the?
That is the recent. It was a separate email.
It said, uh, uh, sent from Snipping Tool.
Yep.
Oh, that's that one.
Yep.
That's that one. That's where the manual is.
I almost feel we need to postpone this conversation for a week, and maybe have Ryan come in.
Or call, or, or join by Zoom or something.
The burial section, that needs to be answered very carefully.
Well, I mean, I've heard, there's some of these questions, I've never, people are building with Nick and Rachel before that happens. Usually those people won't make arrangements before that happens. I kind of.
Well, I'm wondering if there's some type of inheritance money or something that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got it on.
Yes. And I wonder if that's part of her question. And also, I do recall that she was kind of recommended that we go approve of the crematory. Excuse me, excuse thousand dollars. It was the time you would owe that. Let's invite her to resume meeting or, or in person, if it was what she prefers. Or next week.
So the, on page fourteen, the second question was in reference to she had a constituent come in. Actually, let me back that up. The constituents died, and there was some money left. But the extended family, they had to track down extended family, because the extended family did not live in Carroll County, there was no money with the extended family, this extended family did not want to help pay for any of the burial services.
Or there was another instance that one of the siblings. Had where it was all to help with the burial. But can you tie that relative to the current situation, scaring things? And I think that, it, it, and I think she was okay either way, she just didn't know whether she should chase that possibility down. And have them be responsible for the payment, or just pay it here. If they have the word of call, if they chose, choose to join in, they can join in, but if they choose not to, it's just. And I, to me, that's. You know, as an individual we're talking about, it's the unfortunate circumstances they were in. A child or a sibling, or a sister, or whatever.
How far did, how far did you choose?
That, that was her question, how far.
And how, how much?
Well, as a sister, I mean, a sibling isn't required to pay for their brother's funeral.
Or parents.
Say that again.
Well, you shouldn't, yeah, you shouldn't say, oh, they're sister, that's brother, they should pay.
You have money, so you should pay.
Yeah, I don't think it works that way.
I don't think it does either, I mean, that, I mean, they could be, they could be in a strange relationship, and. You know, this person lives in California, he's not coming back for the funeral, not having any to do with that person. They probably have money to pay, pay for it, but I don't think they should be obligated to do that.
I don't think you choose that.
No.
You keep the person that you're involved with right there.
Yeah, if somebody wants to volunteer.
That's fine.
Well, and it'd be different if they were married, you know, and obviously there's. Requirements there, it's your spouse or something, but.
There are some legal things you have to jump through then, which cause delays and.
I see one of the other questions is about if they, if they get buried in Carroll County. I can see where you do have somebody not buried in Carroll County that would need to get buried in the village.
Yes, exactly, and that should be allowed. Yes.
There is a lot of questions, because on page seventeen, it, it goes into it again, responsible party, so. In majority of this is all around the burial.
I think, I think there's a lot of. All this is gonna get down to that point where you give it direction, but yet you're gonna have some latitude, which way to go. Because there, there's not gonna be a clear cut path on some of these.
Uh-uh.
There's so many sites or.
You can't answer every circumstantial.
I think, I think maybe it's just to do have them come in, so.
Visit with her about it.
So on the table, next.
Yeah.
Or Phil, you might double check with first get in.
I'll email her and see what she's available on.
Sound good, thank you.
This, you know. You know, I opened that up, that Snipping Tool, that doesn't give everything, because we go to page fourteen.
See, I think I got, Rich gave me this, but she sent me the email that I bought with you. I can go there to me.
So is there a manual on it?
This is the only thing, this is what Rich brought.
Yeah, I printed this off about the email.
Well, when you see that, I only had ten pages in Carroll County. Well, that's what I got on, on the email. But I wonder, that probably covers all the questions. When she answered the questions, there are more pages. Yeah, there may be more pages, she just didn't choose not to send them on.
Mine doesn't look like this.
Well, I printed it off that email. Had a total of seventeen pages. All right, we'll put that off to the next one. And if you guys, I would suggest you get a copy, but nothing else. If you have issues, I'll get a whole copy. Let's go to the approval plat, we have one plat there? Or two, that's right, there's one that's not on there yet. You can separate, you can email that. So the first one is for. I gotta get the right two here. First one is for.
He's glad.
Sure, Zach, I went past, well, yeah, food. And that looks to me like a just rearrangement, footprint of the acreage. And making it work out with the waterway and stuff like that.
Yeah, I stopped, Tim was out feeding cattle, so I stopped and talked to him about it. Yeah, the, so there's the squared off part.
Yeah.
That's the existing, and so they're changing. They're selling the acreage, there's nothing to deal with, yeah.
So they're changing north and eastern lines.
Right.
Away from the.
So it's not square anymore.
No, so it follows the growing waterways.
Yeah, and. What's that?
Do we have a minimum acreage? Five acres?
Five acres.
That's to build, though.
Yeah, that's to build, and this is actually, I think you said it's sixteen acres.
Yeah, it doesn't apply to new existing.
Two acres.
Right. Yeah, he just, he's just rerouting it, just changing, changing to be more, you know, I, I think he's, he's getting that corner that he can farm.
Yeah.
And he's giving up that little corner down there at the bottom, so. Or the right hand side.
Yeah, but it's smaller than our, it doesn't tie to the tag.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, let's, let's act on these individually. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Next we have is one for Kevin Bender plat. He just a piece of farm ground that he just bought, and it looks like they're splitting, I think roughly about fifty acres off of it. Putting a separate plat on it. I see more issues with that, so only a motion that you approve the better plat.
A second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have a letter support for Kevin Telephone Company, they're also applying for the grant for fiber optics. Expand their territory to the north, west, and south, west. So they have a letter here that they would like to have us send in for the letter support. Also. Is there any discussion on that? If not, is there a motion to approve that letter support?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter support for the telephone company.
A second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? No? All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Do you know who I need to send that to?
I'm gonna just send that down to.
Just mail it down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you want?
I know they, you know, I, I think there's some dates that we didn't do that by.
You want me to just take them home, I can drop them.
It's entirely up to you.
We've had all the confidence, actually. None before I leave, I'll try to grab it. Oh, I think I have too much.
Read that.
The house just comes, that's what I was gonna address, I'm gonna hand this down. It's a letter that we got today. So next we have is the. Discuss the interviews for courthouse. Did you want to tackle this today, have you looked at all of them?
Yeah. All six hours.
Yes. So much fun, sitting here for six hours. Actually, I went to the courtroom that I thought, I kinda did, I was kind of drunk that day, because I knew when you sent that. He got it. Fast forward.
Well, yeah, I'm sure they can.
So what are our intentions, to narrow it down to one firm and move forward, or?
Narrow it to two and then interview again, or what are we gonna do? I mean, those are, those are the options, right, or two or three.
Do you really want to interview them again?
I don't.
I guess the only, the only thing, the only thing is, you know, I guess, you know, my notes. You know, R D G, I'd like to go to their, see their white papers, if that's necessary. The answer to your question was they didn't want to lowball, you know, and. Shai Pattery, you know. So, so, you know, you, once again, you made comments, Stephanie, about, well, say, had you not. Been familiar with the situation. What would it cost you, and they said probably five thousand dollars, so that brings that and write a hat to everybody else. S C H, I mean, they, they probably appeared to me to be the most aggressive. They wanted to go after, you know, the, the job. That's the way it seemed to me. They had a good understanding and good recommendations on the. On the H V A C. Stone Group, I, I really did think they did a very good presentation, I guess. Lacked a lot of substance and. Instead of melee, I, you know, I, I think. I think they did a, you had, had a lot of guys in here. Where'd you keep them all?
They were strung out all the way along.
But, you know, there again, I think they were pretty aggressive on, I think they really wanted to impress this group and. But, you know, there again, I think they were pretty aggressive on, I think they really wanted to impress this group and, and. I put down as a note, I thought they had the best plan going forward on the whole thing, I guess. But, I don't know what everybody else thought. You guys probably discussed a little bit.
Well.
When they, when they turned the audio off.
You know, I've basically never gone to RDG. I'm sorry, I for, well, through the dollar cost, they did not interest me, I was kind of disappointed. Stone Group. I was not interested, and really, still mentally, they have a lot of people and they seem knowledgeable. For some reason, they didn't turn like, and I, I guess I have a whole issue when it gets so many different, and there's, there's cases where they're farming there in our. And I've been through one of those cases where that's one of the issues, the questions I brought up was one of the reasons why that happened, because I think there's a bigger chance of. Have an issue with communications problems with. Shy Batterie, I, I think it's just because they've gotten knowledge of this building, they, you know, and admitted that right away. Mike did mention on Thursday, he said that one thing I forgot to mention is how to handle things as we're doing the construction, which I think we're all aware of that. There's gonna have to be some stuff that. The S E H, they, I thought they was probably put on a good presentation. The one thing I didn't like about them, the guy was putting down the system that we got in the jail. Where he, I, I took it that way, first the two quarts versus four quarts. And I think, in my, my opinion, and I'm not, I'm not an expert. But I think that could be an issue, I think with a system like that's in the jail now, we would probably be able to not disturb as much seating and the asbestos, by going to two pipe, it'd be a smaller system, and each, you know, days of improvement. And, and I think I told you that Chris had told me he had an issue with them and I did follow up on that, and he does not have a good trust factor with them, I guess. So I, but I was down to Shy Batterie and S E H. I think it gets down to a point of who we're gonna feel comfortable with, you know, I, I think Mike has been good to work with, I mean, you know, and everybody makes some mistakes, and I think we've got one of our issues kind of after our jail meeting, that part one, they probably working towards some resolve there, and he was willing to accept that and take that back to his boss Friday. So, I guess I'm gonna, Shy Batterie over S E H, and S E H would be my second choice.
I'm, I'm right in there with you. I like McClure though, because one of the things that they brought forward was, this is gonna have to be phased in, if you're gonna go to a four pipe system, we're gonna be hanging a limbo a long period of time, we could be hanging in there for three, four months, but sometimes those transition months are not three or four months long. So that could create a working environment issue, where I thought McClure did a good job of presenting that they would try to do it in phases, which I think that's probably the right answer. That leans towards a different system, but I think, as I said, I haven't seen proposals on both.
Didn't S E H have, kind of, they were doing the same thing?
They were also brought that up.
Do the cold first and then the, you know, the hot, different, different phases.
Yeah, they, they talked about that also, and, and I think that, I was glad to see at least two or three of them come up with that, they had taken that into consideration, that we're still have a working environment going on, that, that still needs to, still happen. So I, I'm kind of in the same ballpark with the McClure, the Shy, and the S E H, I, I thought Stones was not as good a presentation. RDG, they just, I don't know, they just, they just didn't seem to have what I thought we were looking for. I know that Shy has done several things, I know they, of course, we know them better, they have access to electrical and plumbing and the architectural side, the designer side, and, and that was one of my questions, of putting colors, and we have marble, I mean, don't want to cover it up, don't want to enhance it, I don't wanna pipe in marble, but I would like to have something that complements it. So, it depends on where we're at in the design, I know a lot of us are in a bikini and cooling, and it may take all of our money to do that, I don't know that, but may take a big majority of, but I sure would like to be able to do other things, but that might be possible. I, Dean and I have talked about this a couple of times, it's a chance for us to move the county forward for a long period of time.
If we choose to do so.
If we choose to go that.
You know, and I, I guess, I mean, I wanna interrupt you, but I want your thoughts there, but, you know, that's one thing that, you know, that, that I'm thinking of is that, I don't, you know, five years or ten years down the road with the board supervisor, why didn't you guys, when you were doing this, why didn't you do this too?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
We only get one chance.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess that's kind of one thing that I have thought about, is that I don't, I don't mind being part of the board that
Yep.
didn't do what they really should have been doing, and, and, and tied to that too is, are there other things? And this is what, I believe RDG made the comment that, well, we're gonna come in and see what other kind of problems you have. You know, they made that comment, that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna look all over, we're gonna see what, so what we can uncover, maybe there's some other stuff. And I guess that's, that, that makes me kind of thinking that we can't squeeze it into this financial footprint that there's other stuff that needs to be done, we should probably do it, consider it at the same time.
I thought a couple.
And I think I agree with Dean, but I think the thing is, you kind of alluded to the fact, I think we need a bar, bar for it, and I think the H A B C is part of the top priority.
No doubt about that.
And I, I think.
And that's what it's gonna come from, it's just for H A B C.
And what we can do after that.
In that, I don't mind, we're gonna get it for H A B C.
Well, yeah, it probably sets a lot of different, I'm sure that we can probably make the argument that we need a bigger boardroom for, in case this ever happens again, and for continue to go on for a long, so we can be spread out, I think I can make that argument, and I think probably would be okay with the state and federal review. But, I'm kind of like, if we spend this much money on our plumbing and heating, I kind of don't wanna just do this halfway, I wanna do it like it should be done for the board that's sitting in this, the person sitting in this chair in fifteen years. Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, and the other thing to us thinking of is, I mean, we, we get hung up on asbestos.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, you know, maybe that shouldn't be an obstacle, maybe we need to get the asbestos out of here.
Yep.
Period, just get rid of it, so that, you know, somebody else doesn't have to deal with it. And, and, and the other thing is, we, we talk about, we talk about, this is the question that I probably would have had was, you know, we talked about, well, the jail footprint is only used, can only be used for storage. Well, if you cleaned out the jail, you freed up all that space, if you got rid of all, you get courts come in and cut out all the cells, and took all the asbestos out, how much is it gonna cost you to do that, and how valuable is that space?
Workplace can mean a big deal.
You see what I'm saying, and, you know, maybe, maybe that'd be cheap.
And to create that space, if you didn't clean it all.
And that's what I was getting at, Dean, I think we need to set priority, and I think this thing is gonna be a moving target as we go, is we can, if we got the money, I'm, I'm kind of concerned how far this money's gonna stretch, that's my.
And I think.
I'm not saying that we can't stretch ourselves and do some of that stuff. And one of these guys brought up the fact that those jails, and it's not just the asbestos in that jail, it may be the bars itself. You see, a lot of those jail bars are made with lead, it's lead inside of them. Now, so with that scale, that wasn't worth it, so I think, I think whatever we do, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a flexible movement target.
Well, yeah, I, I guess I don't wanna box ourselves in, where, where there's work to be done, and then we can sell it.
No.
You know, I guess that's, that's kind of what I.
And I, I agree with you there, I don't, at the same time, I don't want to do anything, um, always.
Well, I don't think that's.
And I think it just. The best bang for the buck.
Yeah.
That's like, check, choosing one of these vendors is something that we have to feel comfortable, not only for ourselves, the, the next two or three boards that we handed to, because this money obviously is not going to fix all our areas, this may be an ongoing process for quite a while. It may take five or six, seven, ten years to get all the way through this, but I think the comfort zone that was person that we picked here for an ongoing process. And I don't know, I mean, but I think we probably, I think the government, there's a county could use the same architect all the way through, if we store horse firm, without doing the separate R S P every time we did, you know, let's say we got the plumbing heat, and then we wanna look at an R S P for just doing the boardroom, or we want an R S P for cleaning out the veil. So, if we select one of these, I think we can just kind of keep Andy's firm on down to line.
That was, that was what we were.
To save a lot of issues, so I think that's important that we, the one that's kind of looking at the big picture here, a, a ongoing picture.
I, I didn't hear anybody talk about options, except for maybe the Stone Group, they came in with diagrams, you know, of the way that they would. Whether, whether or not they were pleased or satisfactory to everyone, you know, at least they did that.
They had, had our boardroom open, the recorders.
Ball.
Ball, and I, you know, I'll be honest with you, I walked up there and went there like, get my fit, these tight, but it liked it.
Yeah, but then you would have the general public complaining how that lays out, you have the general public.
Going through an office.
Yeah.
Which isn't ideal.
Yeah, I.
But at least they had ideas, I agree, they came with ideas.
Yeah.
And the thing, when they, when they get open their presentation, they had a picture of the old courthouse, with the blue and the clock on top, and.
That's real.
So, so that, so that was a major, and I asked somebody about that, about when that happened, were you, were you on, okay, when you got, put the new windows in and took the blue, got the blue out of there? I mean, so I mean, there was something that, well, yeah, they, they really needed to be replaced, the windows were bad, it was cold, and, and it was hot when, when, you know, when you had, in the summertime, and so, I mean, there was something that needed to be done, and.
One thing that surprised me is, all these groups were here, and one through this building, not one or another, except for one, and that was RDG.
So.
Well, for your, do you have all your?
We ain't done yet.
We're a long way.
If I could mid pick a group, I would take S E H, and I would bring Tammy and Ashley on board, this one, Stone Group. I was impressed with their interior design, not that, you know, bringing in those options, I kind of wish you would have had, maybe an architect or an engineer to talk a little bit more about the H A B C. So, it's kind of, I did appreciate everything that they had to say more on the interior design aspect. My, my number one pick so far right now is S E H, they did a phenomenal job designing themselves, I think they'd be willing to work with us in the future. My second would have been Shy Batterie, obviously, Michael has a, a good, a good feeling for this building, the one recommendation I did bring to the board as an idea, I, I wasn't in love with the idea, it's an okay idea, it's great for a hospital setting idea, but, I don't know, it, it's hard to really get to the nuts and bolts of this, but I think you do pick whoever you have, you feel that you can have a good relationship with, because none of they have to work on to this, so they have to deal with working on, work on some phasing issues. So as of right now, my pick would be S E H.
My number one pick was S E H also, as far as how, keep it, I mean, they made it priority to make sure every office is still open during, and their heating and plumbing, and there's heating ventilation, air conditioning, no, it just seems to me, between them and Studio Life, seem to be the best, and that's gonna be where the primary purpose of this, yes, we're gonna get secondary benefits of moving offices and some updating, but you know, without those general funds coming in for the government money coming in for the heating and cooling or ventilation, we wouldn't be doing any of this right now, probably. No, it seemed to me that S E H had.
Well, we, we would probably have to do something simply because of the fact that, you know, we've got this space here, we need to do something.
Right, or me. We have a fifty, sixty year old boiler.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as, you know, with the, with the sheriff's office opening up, then you've got that space and what you're gonna do with it, I mean, we could probably go ahead and throw something together, and would probably be on.
Well, okay, but if we're gonna be updating, let's do it once, and let's do it all. And to me, S E H has the best, the best looking forward.
Throwing stuff together is what kind of room we're in now.
Yeah.
If you like where we're at here and it seems okay, then.
I think, I think once, you're right.
I think the other thing is, is, you know, we're using H A B C as a priority, and let's face it, we wouldn't be doing this, it wouldn't be for the general points. So if that thing did crap up, we would probably do a makeshift fix and be back in the same position for the next ten, twenty years. This is an opportunity, times if we make it right, all of that.
Especially that spends more of her time here than I do at my own home, their quality sticks in this building. You see, you know, we talk about the desk, you know, it's from construction, and guess what, that desk was here before, construction may be a little thicker now, but in the winter, when you come in and you're instantly dusted and you have a sore throat, it's. And I know that every employee in this building.
It doesn't.
Is static, but we had better clean here, or cool, I'll ask, I mean, I don't like to speak for other people, usually in general, it sucks. For lack of a better word, it's just sucks. So, or maybe just, I'll cut your head, because these down, for us, I like S E H and Shy, not neither one more than the other, I guess, those were two that stuck out.
And I'd say, I think both of them would do this. I do too, I mean, I think you know, I think one thing that Shy has probably got in his favor is, it's got a lot of preliminary work done. So, that's an advantage. And one of the questions that was asked to me was, originally was, is that Shy the shoe that I missed in one of them? And I think we looked at them all, and, you know, I think Mike maybe talked to somebody who's after our jail meeting, said that he kind of apologized and forgot to talk them off to.
That could have been after watching the other videos, yeah.
Well, he said that to me right after he was down there, because I walked. In his defense, like, after the meeting was over, he's like, oh, I forgot to mention that, because he was.
So that'd be crucial, if they, I feel like. More, that, so the, the architects, he is very quiet.
I think that, you know, like you said, I think we're gonna have to pick who we feel comfortable with, and.
Well, I think, I think too that, you know, as far as S E H is concerned, have a different perspective of what's going on here, bring in a different.
Fresh set of eyes.
Fresh set of eyes, you know. Somebody for us, somebody helps for us to look at.
I will say S E H, it's the best. They did bring out three different options as far as H A B C, the four pipe, the two pipe, and then those individuals, nobody else did that, everyone kind of went straight to one system, or they did the four pipe, the two pipe.
I think they did the most prep before, before the presentation, as far as.
I think so, dude, I was really impressed.
Yeah, so did.
Well, of the other ones, they spent the most time.
Yeah, S E H, oh, they spent most time there too.
I mean, I think the only, as I thought that he was doing kind of putting down. I think the only is I thought that he was then kinda putting down the system that we've got in the jail. And I, I, like you said, I think for that, I think I'm looking at whatever works the best for us, not certain.
So, but he made it clear, we would have a statement as far as what it's fit. He said, it could be a couple of different options.
Well, it's a completely different setup of buildings, cause that does have smaller spaces over there because it isn't jail. And it doesn't have these open common areas. So maybe that's just one behavior. I don't know.
So.
We wanna go forward to there?
I've got my number one there.
I did too.
You do. I mean, unless, unless we wanna, I mean, I didn't get any of the handouts that.
Oh, really?
There wasn't much more in there?
No.
Okay, well, that's.
Your votes is.
About the same thing? Okay.
And there was this handout somewhere there on the table behind you.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It says that S C H is right there underneath the screen. And the bigger one below is urgent, urgent.
But this one really didn't have anything in it.
Jordy, you, Dean, you suggested another study of it. That's up to you.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think so. Not, not unless we wanted to address something that they didn't bring up. And I don't know what that would be. The only, you know.
Anything that we're gonna have to take for us, correct? I mean. Yeah, I don't mind what they were.
So, so if they came in, I, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that S C H did a pretty thorough. Look at this building and, and probably if they were gonna say, you know what, you got some root issues too. You know, cause they were up there. And so, you know, that didn't come up, or I guess that was the only thing that I, if there are other issues that we have with this courthouse, sure, like, somebody can tell us what they are.
Well, I think that's gonna be part of when they do the final.
The assessment, yeah.
I guess the only thing I can come up with to, to back up what you're saying, Dean, is have these labs to come in. If you really wanna do that, bring us what they think, maybe some ideas. Unless we just wanna go with one and.
I don't give a vote today or we, we can extend it to.
Okay, I'll sort out, also try that way. I just feel comfortable.
Hey, S C H.
I'm gonna be with Dean and Shire. That's a pretty comfortable.
I'm gonna go S C H.
And I'm gonna go with this. I, they're both in my back too.
Yeah, and Shire is my second choice.
I think they both did a great job, but I think fresh set of eyes and.
Yeah. All right. I would like to think that since we do have a different, we're gonna have a different one that Shire had or would work with these guys, you know, going forward and. Anything that's tied, tied to.
I did say there's some of that stuff, the digital stuff that they have that is.
Right, and I made an note of that.
Yeah.
Who did this digital prints belong to? Well, and he answered the question.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's.
So do we need a motion about that? I would say we gotta vote, but not really a motion.
No, we've got a motion, but.
Is the motion gonna be the same vote as?
I would go.
The mixed words.
I'll make a motion that, uh, Carroll County Board of Supervisors would be elect to use S C H in their spatial.
Spatial needs request for purpose.
Do you need it? Oh, what you're saying is we can, uh, we vote for what?
Well, you guys said my first pick is this, and I go with this, and I go with this. Well, that wasn't the motion I just had, who was on my side? That's what I.
But we're gonna have to vote. Yes.
I'll sign motion.
Yeah, a little just second to our S C H as the consultant for the retro courthouse. It's gonna be another discussion. I think just for purpose of my vote, I'm gonna vote and say who I still would.
Well, I can, um, if you'd like, before the motion, I can talk, say, this is who.
Okay.
That way it's listed there and we'll have.
So we know how.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, all in favor of, of the S C H's, uh, motion? All in favor, anybody standing right?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sure.
Aye.
Okay.
Well, glad, glad we're moving forward.
Well, we need to keep it going.
Yeah.
So we all, yeah, we, we got a long way.
Yep, yep.
We had.
I think we all agree on that. I had a little angry, they have a just fine team, so.
Oh, uh, committee report. Uh, I can go first. Uh, Monday, I jumped in and did a conservation meeting on Monday night. Um, highlights. Um, secondary roads has been helping with the bridge by Rita, uh, and that's going along very well. On the salt road.
On the trail, yes.
Uh, the great, great question, part C, uh, the west side is, is coming up and then it looks like it's coming in good and thick. Was surprising, a little rainy beta and surprising with that report, that good. Um, the playground fundraising is going along fairly well. Um, it looks like they're gonna meet their goals. And start on those, some of those pieces already. Uh, they'll be doing with their own labor force. Um, the track loader was purchased and it's here. So that, that's a good thing for them going in. Uh, ash tree removal, they, um, yeah, learn, learn a little bit more about ash trees if I was out there. Um, there's a real good chance that most ash trees in the county will wind up being, uh, wiped over it. And there's been just a slight thought that it may be breeding into the linden trees also.
Oh.
So, um, that they're still kinda looking at that, but, uh.
Wiping many linden.
I, I just thought, no, ash trees in front of my neighbor's house and the linden, they're not. But anyway, that, that was kinda disheartening. So we'll see where that ends. Uh, the drawdown pump, they're still working on a plan on that. That has not been finalized just yet. Um, the acoustical panel discussion, um, they got a company there, about thirty-five hundred dollars with the boat. And that leaves that they're gonna try to do a little more than that, probably go midway, so probably gonna spend five to six thousand dollars on the acoustic, trying to give it back going. Which I think is a, um, problem with a lot of the group. Which is if they turn out that way, the hardest gate for it. And on Tuesday, uh, did the reviews and Thursday we have jail meeting upcoming this week. Tomorrow I have, uh, I have scheduled a C A B C. Uh, I have not gotten the gym on, so I'm not 100% sure, but I do have them on the calendar. Uh, then I have the farm bureau supper that I will be attending to that. You know, Wednesday I was going to Holstein for mental health. And that should be interesting conversations, see where we're at. Might expect drawdown state. There'd be lots of questions there. Uh, nothing earth shattering, uh, but I, I do know that Dawn has met with a group of people and children. And help has taken a step forward, so she'll be able to. Other than that, I have the paper and the radios today and that's it for.
Gee, I can do a next, uh, Tuesday was the interviews, Thursday jail progress meeting. Since you continue to move over there, uh, trying to do more of a dead, drop dead, uh, completion day from May. They were gonna work on that Michael. And, uh, Friday I had a yes center board meeting. Um, uh, unfortunately we got one across, it's a lot of money, just state number, it's gonna be there for a while. Uh, but as of, they had a nine point six average for the month and there was under that date. And a couple of D I As in there. Uh, we did have a two thousand and thirteen, uh, car that we got from Flint County. We guys took it and headed out of town to a deer and pulled it out, but so now we've got another one coming from Flint County. Um, they have another vehicle that.
Nobody was injured when they.
No, this, this is the deer. Uh, it seems like if we got a target on those cars. Uh, there is a possibility that we will be getting, uh, be able to do thirty day E value, emails. They are working on that. Uh, uh, there was a situation where one county had a kid at another agency and they were charging forty-seven thousand dollars for the payback. And there's no reason for that. We are looking at that, that. Um, otherwise everything was going pretty smooth out there, so that was that. Uh, this week I don't have anything where I'm, I'm also that C A B C. Uh, one thing I did get is a letter, a new file, just twenty is, is directed to a board supervisor. It just basically talks about things that we're responsible to with the audit and so, this is standard.
Gee, you gonna borrow my water? I got it.
Yes.
That means that golfers swung too many times.
Yes.
That brings from carrying the load. Last week Tuesday was the meeting here for the spatial needs. There was a landfill meeting Tuesday morning. I gave each of you a copy of the increased prices per pound and per ton. If you look at it, the water bottles have gone from a nickel a pound to almost twenty-five cents a pound. And then cardboard has doubled in price, as has tin cans. These are all since game. So if you look at it, the recyclable market is coming back big time. And then Wednesday, yeah, that's a good time. Wednesday I spent four hours of, or a couple hours of the landfill on a tour of the recycle center. Um, Thursday, annuals meeting with Dr. Slidery and I knew Anthony and Nuttles. Then we had the jail meeting on Thursday morning also. Then tomorrow night is the Carroll County Farm Bureau and the House Farm. That's all I have. Friday, I'm, I'm gonna go to the city extension meeting, not represent the county, but just just on that hundred and ten acres.
So on the, um, landfill meeting.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned anything about the fires? You know, the lithium battery is not there.
Yeah. They didn't. Yeah. And they've got dirt piles that aside, something that is gonna be brought up is who's on call? Because the way they put out fires up there is they need an operator of the heavy equipment. And I did meet all thirteen employees. I think five of them are qualified to, uh, Saturday night, put out a fire. Cause if you get a fire truck, can't put it out, they just gotta push dirt on top of it and smolder it.
And, um, and the, the second thing was Cass County is still not.
No, they're done.
They're out of the picture.
They found another one.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and I think, I think when.
That's interesting.
I mean, you know, with price.
They should be considering.
But they don't even have a recycle program in Cass County. They don't even have curbside bins. They completely abandoned. I'm not gonna be switching out some people's curbside bins. They're gonna be putting new stickers on them of what is recyclable just for public knowledge. Like the only plastics that are recyclable right now are ones and two.
Right.
But a lot of people throw other things that I have that are not. And like a Cool Whip container from the company Cool Whip is not recyclable. The Walmart brand is. The people on the sorting lines know, even though they're identical, they can tell which ones are recyclable, which ones aren't.
I can go next. Um, I didn't have anything the last, um, two weeks actually.
Except for one big pitch.
And, uh, but I did, did take, uh, did take a few calls as far as roads are concerned, which. Just some situations, I did. Individual situations, I guess, that were called in. Um, and, uh, they did pass. Before it died, city report died, did pass the, um, contract now with Region Five Hazmat excluding anything that has to do with an insurance, insurance, health insurance and workers' comp insurance. So that part has been deleted. City can, the city council has approved that contract, omitting those. And so did, uh, Region Five Hazmat. So now we're set up for, it's, it's an annual, annual, um, contract that it's, that expires in ten years. So it goes on for ten years, cause we were working without a contract, because that ten years had expired. And so, so that's a good thing. So this week I've got, uh, Farm Bureau meeting tomorrow night and Board of Health meeting on Tues, Thursday, uh, Thursday meeting.
That's right. Trying to read this, what did you say?
Uh, Farm Bureau meeting, annual meetings Monday and Board of Health on Thursday.
You know, last week, the R F P meeting on Tuesday, I did do the newspaper radio. We had a jail meeting, then a chamber ballroom. I did spend some time with a few constituents, um, not from general financial, but discussing the west side ambulance service. Um, and I will be speaking with John Warren this week on behalf of that, see if there is options or any ideas. And then I'll bring, present to the board, and then also working with the, the M E stuff with Scott, which thank you so much for all your work in that area. Then we had Wesco. And we did a performance evaluation for Clay. We'll hear the results at our next meeting. So I have the district meeting today, fifteen minutes. And I was scheduled to go to the Farm Bureau meeting, but I do not.
Courtney Gooding? Any comments on the budget that's been, uh, all of this, and what we have left? All right. If there's nothing, are there any comments from those attendings? Any comments online?
Wake up, Ed.
Uh, no comments online.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we're in order for motion to adjourn.
So much.
Second.
Then move to the second, all in favor, so you can fly to Sanai.
Aye.